Which ones?
Uh.
I didn't do any. Uh, I'd like to call to order a meeting on Swamp Landy Commission, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. At eleven. Sixteen AM. Uh, here is the Swamp town office. First is agenda review. View minutes.
Do themselves a minute too?
Yes, we have two meetings in a row we did do. Uh, land use development break review. Set an explanation and then uh meeting public comment public business. Possible changing of our regular scheduled meetings, that's something um. We we talked about trying to find maybe something that suits everybody's schedules a little better um. Where are you going? Hold on. Um. And then, does anybody got anything that I know Jim's probably got lists of stuff, but anything that I actually have to do at the end of? Alright, well get the meetings uh minutes taken care of, maintain motion, hear the release.
Do I do it together?
Oh, we can do this.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to accept the minutes of the Swamp Landy Commission. January sixth meeting. As. Ready?
Seconded.
Questions been made and seconded? On the sorry, the January sixth meeting minutes?
Yes.
Um, any discussion? None, all those in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye, aye.
Oh. Motion passed. Again, another need, another.
Like to make the motion that we accept the. Minutes or the drafting minutes for the planning commission. Select board and village trust meeting of January twenty third. At the Bridge complex. One, one second, one nice. Twenty third.
It's okay.
The third, okay, twenty second, I'm sorry.
I seconded both of them.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, I do have a question, I guess maybe not so far from minutes, what was the? I had a hard time following the. How time for humanity?
I talked to him yesterday.
Are they talking about the rip property?
Yes.
Did they?
That's one of the things we talked about, what's that?
I thought the town owned that.
Must be their, maybe.
The village owns it.
The village owns it and they must be trying to make something happen.
I have.
But how big is that lot?
I imagine.
Okay, uh, and I talked to him yesterday and just kind of clarified what they were trying to do, which is something we did talk about previously that maybe we just. There's no- nothing concrete, so like I told him. Anyways, we'll talk about that. Um, motion been made and seconded, uh, discussion, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those. Land use, so I see Heidi, but. Um. One thing that he mentioned yesterday. And I see, did you get my, I responded to you and Heidi yesterday and I sent Heidi forward this email.
I got it, I got her email, it's the third attachment in your little thing here.
Yeah, but. I had asked her to. Store the email from Robin at Habitat because he had made some other comments, but maybe that's. Only pertains to the village, one of the comments he mentioned to me was. Putting a timeline on um water and sewer allocations. Me and um, and he's only seen this in other communities. Um, like a five year allocation. If you don't use your allocation within five years, the the village can essentially take it back. And what that does is. Actually, someone could come in and ask for all the remaining allocations and then do nothing but the fall. And I don't even know where the village is at, what they have for water and sewer allocations, of course. No, that's the city said all that, see.
No, I thought he said swamp is around the same. Eighty two acres.
I don't remember, I don't remember.
He committed, he actually said what they have?
I don't remember. Um, so what Robin was saying was, you know, some of these other communities as they're being built out more and more, some of. Was to try and put in a big development, have a full truck. And then sit on that development for a long time and not use. All those allocations, it could spifle growth in other areas.
Can you buy those and like, could a company buy those and resell them for a profit?
I have a question that that could be done, I don't think that's.
Uh, cause that's like, I could see, I would see that more, I wouldn't be surprised to see that happening in places.
Yeah. I'd say oh, yeah.
Where there's a type.
Uh huh.
That shouldn't be right now, he's, why is he? Referring to this if I might ask, you know.
He was doing a general review and he's been involved and he worked for, he's in the town assets. So he was doing a general review, now he works for um. Habitat, as like the construction manager, I guess is his term, um. And so must be he's working with the village and maybe Heidi got him involved. In looking at these reviews because she knows somebody.
There we always like believe that a bit.
Yeah, he wrote an RFP and da 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 da.
Big enough for a property.
Um. He said it was couple.
Say this, fix the venue.
I thought it was. I thought it was like at least an acre.
Cause that's what, when I was.
It's about an acre, it's only about an acre.
I couldn't, the way I understood his conversation was that they were looking to put multiple structures there.
So what they.
But in my head, I thought it was the, just the footprint would be too small, like you could put up multiple units in one structure, but I didn't know there would be even a.
No, it says it's only point six one acres. I thought it was good. Uh, this is, this is really, really accurate, which.
Which I don't see how you could follow through that. Cause his, his sticking point was structures.
Point six one.
I don't agree that. The only thing that I could see in the, you know, what's there completely put up a multiple one.
Yeah, but I don't see that, some mo- multiple buildings.
So what he, what he's trying to do and is kind of what we talked.
Point three six.
What's that?
What, they've voted on this budget?
No, it's more than.
Six south first street.
It must be, it says six.
No, south, six south first street is appropriate, it's point three six seven acres.
Yeah, it looks fair.
Okay, Zach, can you just update, how many else should order it from that property?
Mhm.
That's probably.
This is usually.
But I thought this part, this part.
This is usually accurate.
This, this part means it was, that's pretty sure.
It shows at point six.
Those lines may be.
But anyways.
The lines are acc- are accurate, but the acreage will take. No, the lines are an estimate.
On X is usually dead on.
No, sir.
Of acreage.
But it's not, it's the acreage, it says point six one.
The acreage, yeah. Yeah. I wonder, I'm wondering if there's somehow that's split in different.
Yeah, so anyways, the point I was.
What's that from?
Two seven.
Yeah, but it doesn't say this was.
What we talked about with. What you talked about with Cory and what he's alluding to is. And Habitat's a personal thing, right, is they typically have centralized. Like. A specific house for someone, not, not so much a apartment building.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was.
And with, and with their. Business model, I guess you can say, and he said the, sometimes the best way to service the people that. Need their housing. Is individual structures. So what he was getting at was a couple. Not so much pine docks, we've got one or two bedroom, like smaller condos. That are not necessarily like attached to each other.
I don't know how it even fit on that law. That, but I was scared, I mean, I don't.
It sounded like he wanted it to be permitted and something like that.
I didn't want it to be. Broke before the D O B.
But in my, can you, can you have?
Cause the layout is.
Can you have, well, so what I think he's trying to do is have it be somewhat of a. On a double pay basis. Where they don't own the land. People only own the structure and have multiple structures on the same.
I know that's, that's the same thing as.
How's that wrong?
That's the same as.
Well, then when you, the Habitat, you're buying a house, you're not getting it for free. You're actually paying for the house.
But you, you don't get. Yeah, but that's the same as when that lady came in from, from the, um, my person, Champlin Housing Trust. It was the same, they, they, they hold the land.
They don't, they don't keep it.
Their idea.
Say hold the land, they don't.
Two, two, they take all your equity.
They don't, they take all your. You gain no money.
The same, it's the same. Heather, it's the same, the, the mobile home park on Bushy Road is the same way. There's an out of state business that owns the land and you just, you pay, they pay, they pay like five hundred dollars a month. Law rent. That you own your, your, your mobile home, you rent that law. And it's like five hundred dollars. Habitat's not as much, like Habitat's not rent, you own the house, they own the land, so you can't sell that without their like approval.
But, but like in the future. You're not on. You can only sell it to their approved and you can only sell it for so much, like there, it's all cash.
Yeah.
Make a huge profit.
Exactly.
You can't pay your habitat house, you just. Buy it for two hundred and sell it ten years for five hundred. It's, it's all controlled.
It's controlled.
Habitat's a little bit.
I get where they're going, but at the same time, like as people.
They're helping, they're leveraging it to house people.
You, you kids. They're helping more people, right, they're helping people on poverty, but they're not helping people gain and not well to get out of poverty.
But they're also. No. They're, they're keeping their, they're keeping leverage on their share. Essentially, you're making their properties more valuable.
Let's get people home.
I think.
It's more affordable cause it's capital.
Right.
Right?
And it is more affordable, but like you said, it's not helping anybody get out of their situation.
But it is helping if you're paying eight hundred dollars a month instead of about an eight hundred, and then you're putting that money aside.
Yes. Yes, but. That's usually the problem. Is that, if you're not, yeah. Whereas, whereas land or. Housing is a great investment because it's never gonna decrease the value. That if you own a home for ten years, you can usually. Make more money for those people, it does help them, but it's not a long term.
I'm curious if they need.
They're not gonna make that equity and then sell it to buy a nice.
So, so um. Essentially, what he was saying was, I mean, in essence, two foot more.
Okay.
This, this is how we.
Thousand structures.
Like just to make sure that.
On the same piece of property. That is not. Um. When you're submissive. But not under, like with a um. An ADU. ADU is secondary for the primary residence, so technically we could have two structures. In essence, having an ADU or secondary house, what they're looking at is, one, they're two small houses side by side in the same line. That may not work out in a P U D fashion.
So, my only concern.
Am I, am I making sense?
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
I, I like his idea of what they wanna do, but I just think that's not a law for it. Because that law is.
That doesn't. Regardless, that doesn't matter, they, they clear.
No, but I don't, that's why I don't think we can use, just put it as a permanent use.
No, it shouldn't be permanent, it should be.
Because.
And I, and I understood that's what he wanted, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Nobody wants a.
But.
But the other thing is, is if. With our rules, we can, they can go down to a fifth of an acre. But. We can't stop them, but they, like, I just, that law is what is. It's so narrow and long. That I'm, how are you gonna?
It was a specific law.
The one, the rip property.
I wonder if there's a. I wonder if there's a bylaw or anything for that, Robert.
It's out for our.
I don't.
We'll, we'll list your card and tell me there's a bylaw.
That would seem like a waste of the.
That's what I was, but like at the same time.
Okay, I'd add to. I'd add to a public RFP, if, if someone wants to put an apartment building in there, the village asks for proposals.
Yes.
To. Buy it for X. Buy it and do. The village asks for those proposals, people are giving them. A proposal and I believe Habitat's final. Is that the only one?
Okay.
Isn't there, is there brownfield stuff on that law?
Has it been?
Yes.
On a cleaned up.
Hey. Yes, yeah, 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 when they did that.
They did?
They cleaned it all.
It's all, yep, so.
Yeah, that's basically the same thing.
Hey, um. Christina. I mean. Heidi sent her email, I saw she copied.
Oh, sorry. I think she might be getting.
Uh, I saw her copying.
Yeah, I wonder.
Greta. On the email.
Yes.
And Cory said they're not getting. Cory, I texted Cory this, last night or this morning, and he said he has a. And he was going to email after today. Yeah, I said.
Let me back up a little.
Sorry, you were.
I asked Heidi, she had comments the other day to just send us.
What's this?
Down what was. Of a concern when she was trying to talk about the other night, just so we had something in front of us. To continue. To look at that because she's talking about taking out one district and. Make it into something else, so. That was what that email was generated from.
Heidi's.
Yes, from Heidi.
Yeah, no, no, I, I knew that, um.
But it's just the, what she was talking about. Last week there to really emphasize, but pretty hard to understand what she was really trying to.
They were being awfully cryptic.
Yeah, you know, you're going uh the travel district to the commercial. District and then down here, which is.
Are you saying that there are plans in place already and they're just trying to be allowed, and those are gonna be able to happen?
They've got ideas or in a conversation to listen.
And they.
Yep.
And I asked Brian about that and they're, what they don't want is they don't want residential housing in that district. Because if it does, it changes, they have to do a lot more for Brownsville. So that's why the village doesn't want that, you know, the travel service is a way, but.
But if we. Take, but I think we consolidated. We consolidated, um.
TSA was going what, central business, isn't that business?
Business, and, and central business has residential, but TSA has not.
Right.
Does that make sense?
That's right.
So, so. Essentially. We gotta leave TSA.
That's basically what they're looking for, that's I think they'll put there.
But.
That's. From what I've read, no, I mean, you read this, you read that.
Does it make a difference if it's potentially?
I don't know, I've seen that. Peel over by M V U and I think, wouldn't it be nice to get apartment buildings there and like just walk across the street, I know, I'm a bad guy, but like.
Oh, I just know.
The Buell parcel that was right there, right? Has water and sewer right there?
Yeah, definitely. Who owns it, they're, they're, they don't wanna do that.
Burgers, burgess, engaged.
There was supposed to be a taxi facility. Taxi or co-.
Then there's that roundel lots, anyways, I don't want roundel.
I thought, roundel lots, that's sold, it's missed. I thought the town bought it. I thought that was part of that pre deal swap or whatever it was, you.
That was only a couple of neighbors.
No, that's not, that's on the north side, seventy eight.
Okay, so what's the whole lot then?
Wasn't the one out of south.
That's still in works.
Yeah.
Um. Alright, I guess we'll get into. So. Did we, did, is. This is gonna sound bad and lazy, but I'm. Do we need to, do we need to go through Joel's thing, list by list?
Yes.
And, and make sure it's been done or it's Cory?
No, so I gave it to Cory, but Joel called me. After meeting and wanted to ensure his list was discussed, it wasn't noted in the minutes, which was fine. So let's go through it, something.
Is this like a, is that personal Joel list or a Joel has the highway?
Oh, I have a personal wish to drive.
He just wants to make sure that he was aware of all of his ideas.
Yeah, I think you missed the mission.
But, one of the things I was looking at, I love the, the discuss turning the village into a mixed use. So I remember being like, no, don't make, don't put a mechanic shop next to my house on Grand Ave. But then I, but Cory explained that in the village, it should be a mixed use, that way you can have a bakery or a restaurant or a little shop.
Yeah.
Grab some little things next door to you. So I thought we had changed the village. Quit the residential. Uh, use with business.
Well, you can have.
I mean, I'm not saying we need to change.
We'll have to look at those specific districts.
But I know that would have cut out much of our.
None.
Or, uh, oh, mind for you.
Uh, I'm not sure, so. Let's.
You know what I mean, but.
I'm following, you know, let's go to that after we go through this list. Or we might even look at it along, RC district. Where Joel wants to go to.
Recommended changing the side setbacks, could you do that, correct?
Yeah, but not.
But RC went away and is all shoreline, correct? No, because recreation, French Hill.
No, that's recreational, that's the piece of land.
The rest comes.
Not with the shoreline, um.
Yeah.
Next one would be uh. Wildland.
But I believe we turned that into R, we were talking about turning that into R one.
Off R two?
No.
RC right.
Hog Island, Hog Island, we were gonna get rid of Recreation Conservation, turn it into Residential.
Well, that could be, but I, I can't find it, I didn't observe that.
It's supposed to be on the maps that we don't have. Does that make sense?
Okay, so the only thing missing is he wants it to be twenty five feet to the road.
Didn't we actually color a map, did we do that?
We, we did, so, so let me just finish, hold on.
Who hasn't?
So essentially, we talked about the fact that a law of West Swan. Is now either new land use, land trust. Or has room for. Room, right, so we talked about taking it out of Recreation, Recreation Conservation. Putting it into the residential, whatever our residential, new residential district is.
Okay.
And the only. Recreation Conservation was potentially French Hill, but I personally think we could. Can essentially do away with Recreation Conservation.
Don't say that.
Because it's all going to one acre lots anyways.
That's right. And that's, of course, what I understood was gonna happen to French Hill, if they got.
Maybe I had it.
I didn't understand that that one out in West Swan. Was gonna go, but it's going to the same description as our residential one.
Yes.
Got the same description now, I don't know the reason for. The differential of it, maybe the setbacks or something of that nature.
I think it originally was the three, three law, three acre lots, which we decided to do away with.
That's. But got, got rid of that, that's.
So now, at this point, it's. In my opinion, we can almost get, get rid of Recreation, Recreation Conservation.
The only thing I saw was maybe what can be. Developed down there as opposed to what could be developed in. A R one. The total of, you know.
Did, did we keep that just because of the. Refuge, is that like its own district basically? You can't build a.
I, I don't honestly remember that. Alright, so, Chris.
I'm gonna give a hand.
Say.
Can you give me, you give me some sticky notes, please?
The stack. Did you know Ross, who has that map that we altered, I know we sent it to regional, but.
What's she does? I don't remember, it's from two.
Even that.
Okay, let's, let's go back to that down there, Joel is representing like the front side and the rear setbacks would be at the twenty five.
Right, it'll be different, it's fifty.
For thirty feet, well, we did drop it down to twenty five foot.
Except the front is fifty and twenty four.
For the front, yeah, and I.
And the block area is fifteen and twenty.
But these are still one acre lots.
Huh?
These are one acre lots.
Yeah. And these, I, I hesitate, I'm going down, but my feeling is, we should have done it down.
So Recreation Conservation is.
But then we, we didn't edit.
Where is that, here is green. So it's, which is hog out there and up in.
Yeah.
French Hill.
Not the new map or the old map?
This is the old map, we don't have new maps because. So possibly we can't get anything out of.
Which is. Which a good chunk of French Hill.
Is all. What are we comparing it to residential? R one, is that what you want to kind of tie it to?
That's what I, well, that's what I understood, but, okay.
I think you only have that, we can have a picture.
You're accepting a meeting, I think, or.
Maybe, maybe I had it backwards, maybe it was French Hill we were gonna change to.
Now look though.
R one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Hog Island, you were gonna leave RC, but I think our, Hog Island should be R one as well, anything on this side of the road?
This is the same.
I have a feeling if you look.
This is almost the same though. This is, this is the residential and this is Recreation.
Right.
And they're almost the same.
Right.
Right at four, this is fifty and that's fifty, both of us.
Okay, but what you can develop for and put in there is.
Twenty percent versus fifteen.
Now is that gonna change too? The lot coverage?
Well, lot coverage is.
But. Especially as.
Same as the R one, if you're forty percent.
Why is he asking?
Because they want to make sure everybody's suggestions and change recommendations were in before you.
No, but I just don't like, what was Joel's, like, did he have a reasoning for wanting?
Don't.
Is it ma- like to match the other districts or?
We should get rid of this. You know.
Well.
Because that should just be like. A small business, right? Depending on you, like are we.
conditional use, because of the noise.
Are we. Yeah, with the noise, but like, are we just checking, if not, I hear, I hear, no.
No, that, that means someone to put a channel next door to my house with, without. Or someone that has.
But. Can it fall under business something, that we could, that we happy under conditional use?
You can't just put all business under one thing, well.
No, yeah, you can't, I mean, a s- uh, bed, breakfast and a campground are both big noises. That make sense, I mean, I guess that's a little auction house.
Yeah, they're a long, kind of, right?
An auction house and uh, a garden center are both businesses.
I think that's where the difference has come. I'm just guessing, it's not a part of, from getting yourself.
Is auction house a necessary?
Didn't mention retail.
I don't. I, that's, there's no auction houses around anymore anyways, I don't, I don't know, it's been in there for fifteen years.
Isn't it retail, that's what I'm just saying, we need it in there, take it as a retail establishment.
No, an auction house is a little different, not retail, because you have usually like certain times where there's a lot of. Traffic or. It's more common, more.
And loud and assertive, you can hear him outside.
Ross, you're, you're an excellent entrepreneur, you should.
Did you see, did, did you see one of those, um, there was a senate hearing or something that the guy running the meeting, one of the senators was an auctioneer from like Montana or something?
Consider training.
And someone interrupted the meeting, like a protester was in the back row, like protesting. So he started into an auctioneer, so nobody could hear what she was like screaming until the police dragged her out, so he's just up there. We got a phone for sale, phone for sale, a hundred dollar, and he's like auctioning.
Auction, is it?
Yeah, he was silencing her and auctioning off her phone, and then she got dragged out of the hearing. Um.
The only thing on the first one that Joel's got, I disagree with changing the frontage. Down to twenty five feet. I.
That's too close to the road.
That's too close to the, my estimation.
Yeah. Just.
Anything that's. Like this district.
Yeah, well, any district, I mean, you look at, um, our Greenville's old house that he tore down on two oh seven, that house got hit by a car like four times. And that was further, I mean, it wasn't much.
That does need to change, though, Joel's got a point. Maximum lot coverage under RC is only at fifteen percent. If we went down to one acre. That's not a lot. Does that make sense?
Ten questions.
Forty thousand square feet an acre. Right?
Forty five, forty, forty three thousand four.
Forty three.
Ocean.
Cory, does that underline, does that, you know?
That's only sixty five hundred square feet in it, probably.
It's not off.
What is the plan of that high market list of businesses it's allowing, is it just seeking like yes or?
No, those are actual, those are all you can ask to do unless you come into.
Unless you come in.
Unless you come and plead your case for us to add something to it.
That's what I'm saying, like, a lot of these things that are like speculative, like auction house and count, that may never happen.
They usually get added because at one time they were asked.
Okay, but how, how difficult is it for somebody to come in and say, hey, I'd like to be an auction house here? And for us to change it?
We have to change it, it's not overly difficult.
It's not overly difficult, right, so, I mean, some of the stuff like nightclub is kind of like.
No.
You know, like.
Have to change the Bible.
But you don't want a nightclub here.
I understand that, but we don't need, we put nightclub, nobody's putting a nightclub.
Don't, alright, alright. Who says nobody's wanting to put nightclub in?
And if they want to, they can come in and ask for it, I'll give it to them.
Well, I'm.
Well, but it's still like when I see that in here and I'm like, come on, what are we looking for?
Who's gonna put a campground? No, who's gonna put a campground in any of these either?
Campground is a reasonable.
You know what it would take, and then take it at the Congress and put a campground in that place, okay?
They would run that, would be a.
Essentially, save that one.
Save it.
Where's your campground, where's your campground down there?
Right here, yep.
Right there.
They could never build that today.
They, well.
They have.
Their setting design, it's over, uh, this side of the road here, out of about a five acre plus, it would not be here.
They got.
I mean, they.
They've got three little ponds.
A lot of, they got a pavement and everything else, they have a fantastic.
Give me done anywhere, people want to invest in the infrastructure, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Something there.
And they got the, the infrastructure, they got over.
Yeah, they put that camera on the front. I remember at the time.
Oh, yeah, that probably did in the beginning.
Those are.
Was it something back then?
Alright, we're getting, we're getting to the weeds.
Okay.
Hey, where are we?
Um, so I do believe though in Recreation Conservation.
I agree with her.
He's got lot coverage to twenty percent, I, I, I would agree, maybe even twenty five, because those are now one acre lots.
What is it?
But I still think we need to have the conversation as to whether or not we even need Recreation Conservation. But I still think we need to have the conversation as to whether or not we even need recreation conservation action.
And you agreed on the set, you should have decided rear setback changes, but not the front?
I think it should stay, I would keep the way this
Get letter A.
Fifty, twenty five and twenty five. I would leave it alone.
So leave the front.
Fifty.
Wait a minute.
Yep.
Okay, so you are reducing the side and rear then.
Whatever it says on this piece of paper.
You're looking at the wrong piece of paper.
No, no, this is the wrong meeting. You're looking at the wrong thing.
Eight, eight.
You're looking.
I'm on the right page, right?
Four.
Five. Yeah, fifty, fifty, fifty.
Fifty, twenty five, twenty five.
Mine says fifty, fifty.
That's old. Where'd you get that? She went at the meeting last week, she just.
You can't change it.
These are the ones that we printed off for the meeting.
This came from the meeting last week. What I'm looking at right now.
We have one, that a big fat, that one.
Yeah, she just gave me one.
Yeah, what is yours say, Heather?
Mine says the same with boxes.
Mm-hmm.
We're twenty.
This is twenty five, twenty five.
Twenty.
Yeah, that's mine.
Mine says fifty, fifty, fifty.
Not here in Shoreline.
We're arguing because my paper's wrong.
Mine says fifty, twenty five, twenty five, two six.
You're.
The Vermont.
You're on the right page, you're fifty, twenty one. No, that doesn't say anything, you're.
Is that the right district?
During this group.
A.
Two six.
Yeah.
A.
You're on the right page, but it's not, it does not say the old.
This fifty, twenty five?
Does not say the old one. There you go.
Yeah.
For all.
Well, there, take that.
Yeah, no wonder we can't get along.
Well, it's, it's, it's.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Don't make your.
So leave the front at fifty sides to twenty five at twenty five percent lot coverage.
This one doesn't even have a page.
Twenty, twenty, twenty?
Two space. Oh, it's.
No, twenty five.
Twenty five. Twenty five? I just put a twenty, oh, he's only asking.
Uh. He's asking for twenty, but what is our R one district?
Yes, I believe twenty.
It is twenty, so.
Oh, wait a minute.
R one is
I'm in the stomach.
Twenty. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
To twenty? Then he just merged the two, leave his private club arena, you know.
That should. That don't fool the other follow-ups.
Very exact that.
We, we don't even have time to.
We don't even ask for it.
Don't ruin my retirement.
That's for sure.
That's my retirement. Hey, I wanna open a bottom name.
No, that's my retirement plan.
Yeah.
Hey, no.
You even know what that's from?
And you can come before the board.
You ever.
I love it. It's the only place in San Antonio that's being permitted is the industrial park.
You, it works like in.
You know how much money I can make on every person that works in the industrial park on their pay between the trip up? I'm here with, I'm here with. And I'm gonna send up so that I can just deduct out of their paychecks, they don't.
You ever watched.
That's important here, we're having a couple of meetings being recorded right now, okay? Let's worry about that future.
That's fine.
Let's keep rolling, let's keep rolling. In Shoreline, this section should reference Shoreline, the act also be referencing section nine.
It was a shoreline.
Or doctrine act, and I think that could be
Exactly.
referenced in the Shoreland District, to be honest with you.
Okay, so that's something Core is gonna do.
That's right.
Okay.
Core is doing.
Rural district, recommend changing front, side and rear to twenty five or thirty.
We've already changed the sides.
Better.
Rural district if you're R one.
The, no, I think we see, leave it at fifty.
Absolutely.
Twenty five feet from county road?
No, I don't.
It's a freaking highway.
That's what I mean.
No, we want fifty feet.
So you're probably just stop, you, so again, here you don't wanna change the front.
No, I don't.
That's right.
Right, I read.
It was the sides to twenty five.
So I'm wondering if Joel's comments, maybe some of these comments were before this fifty, look at that document right there, do a thorough review.
So we saw this at the select, we're meaning the day we.
Yeah, but I gotta, he had that copy, but it's not changing.
That's what I'm getting at. If you go to that copy right there, I wonder if that copy doesn't say twenty five, twenty five. And if Joel was working out of that copy, does that make sense?
That could be, he may be, but he don't have it on the computer.
What page is that on?
Two twelve.
Two twelve.
Yeah.
How was your two different copies?
Yeah. Because.
Cause that's the old one.
Christina, that was after the meeting, they, we changed that, cause uh, well, I brought before the meeting.
I wonder if that's me, like.
I dropped fifty, fifty, twenty five.
When the meeting Earl was at.
So I.
Probably was a meeting before that, but
Maybe, so there there
I couldn't quite.
Joel, you might have printed a copy like a month ago, that didn't have some of these changes in it, and that's that.
If whoever is working draft, he could have changed.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it's one in her, you know.
And then you printed these for the meeting the other night.
So that's why it's probably not there.
These are outdated compared to that, when you, it depend, that document's getting up. You've printed, it's a working draft, so that was printed before
The working draft? Okay.
these were printed, so Joel may be working out of something similar as that.
Was the same as the hall of. Okay.
Okay.
So he, he was working, working off of what he got off in the book.
Think we figured it out. What he was, what he was emailed that first time that I emailed you to go home.
We're at.
That's right.
Yes.
And he made a comment to me about, he said, Mike, I do a lot of reading and then crossing off there, you know, I could understand for that, but like.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
I think it's hard to feel this way.
So.
So the next one, number five was already done. He's asking for sixty, but we gave a sixty five.
Yeah, it's already.
Sorry.
Yeah, see, that's all.
The table was still not in like seventy.
I agree, I feel like it's too long.
Two forty four garden tool shed for lots with before less of frontage, recommend allowing sites at the back.
If you look at that chart, there's nothing on that chart for that, that's the only thing, but there is a somewhere's in there, you can read where these ten by ten up to a hundred square feet of shed in the district five here in the village can be within five feet of the back line.
Where in the village?
In the village here.
And so you're questioning it.
So it should be able to be five or.
That's a question doing the size that way though. I.
I mean, I get it if you have nothing near the shed, but there's a chance that the house is coming next to the shed, and that's the whole point of this storyline is to keep the neighbors getting along, and if somebody puts a shed right next to you, you shouldn't go.
That's exactly what I think, you're already those neighbors, whether you kitchen or.
That's. But if you're living in a residential and you put it in the very back of your lot, sure, of course it doesn't matter because and then, right, you put your lawnmower in it, but.
Yeah, but but most people went back to back, it isn't what's back there, but if you were, you're out and sitting on your porch and that shed is right there. It's kinda would be annoying, and I think we should stay away from the sidelines of that and just leave it stay as it is in the back.
I wonder if he's, there's some specific, he's saying for narrow locks that allow.
Yeah, but that's the same thing, you have a house setting right here.
Oh, yeah.
In the shed.
The house is forty feet wide, you got a hundred foot law.
Well.
That means you only got thirty feet on each side of the house.
I don't think fifteen is outrageous.
No.
This room is longer than.
I think we leave that alone.
This table fifteen feet?
This table's twelve. And maybe fourteen.
So from here to the wall.
Twelve.
That's not ridiculous. From the shed, from the wall, from the, you know, pretty line.
It would be, yeah, here the wall, it's fifteen feet, no, no, no.
Yeah.
That's, I I would.
I see in that table.
Yeah.
By feet, you can't even mow beyond, hardly.
It's there. But in that table, there's nothing in there. I I don't know what he needs to question to add that to that table.
So.
It says garden tool shed right here.
Yeah, it says shed.
Yeah. They wants to.
Sideline.
Without clarification, I think that's pretty minimal. We're just gonna keep moving.
There's lots of hundred feet of us, how we put that in here? How would you put a special?
Yeah, but we're gonna just keep moving. Section three dot three, paragraph one. Will Vermont D E C provide proof be that existing system, I doubt if not, recommend a state report from engineering.
Well, the, I don't know the whole story, do you mind that? Only what pieces I have heard from Amy. And what questions have been made, if someone has got an older property and they had they go back and say, well, it could be year round at such and such a time, they state will approve it.
They did.
Is that that clean slate rule that they emailed out for?
That could be, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what.
Like the property on like what drive they came with the year round, they got, they fell under the clean slate rule of your septic.
So, but this could be, you know that statement could be put in there with the time being. So we know exactly what that was gonna be. That's like taking a vacation home that's used two hundred days a year, hundred and eighty days a year, and then saying, okay, a family can move in there and use it year round, what happens if it fails?
Well, but we, didn't we say we want state approval?
This is what this is saying, that the state should give state approval.
Yeah.
See, he's asking maybe that the existing system is adequate for year round use. State being ordered for faith or an engineer.
He's saying no. I, well, the way I read that is the state won't give that, so that's why he's asking for an engineer. The state wouldn't be the current system?
They have a, their policy on fulfilling, yes, but is it questionable?
Who would question, we would question the state?
Well, yeah, let's say it's been, let's say it's been a vacation home for twenty years.
And the state says it's adequate. We can ask for an engineer's report, is that, that's what he's, that's what.
That's basically what he's trying to say there.
Okay, now now I'm understanding.
I agree.
I agree with what he's saying, but I just feel like the state is gonna be so strict on the septic systems that they're not, it's gonna approve it.
It has something, I wish Amy was here, she could explain it. That's the only thing that I can say about it is that I know that there's been situations down on the farm shore where they've asked for and somebody said, well, we've been there for twenty years and year round and their neighbor has one, is a septic system, how do you know?
Without an engineer's report.
Without an engineer.
But the state would want to see the engineer's report to approve it.
Yes, it would, yeah.
So if we defer everything to the state, why do we need to see an engineer's report?
Well, in other words.
If the state's happy, why wouldn't we be, you know, I didn't.
That's the question, I think he's got it.
Can we even ask, we can't ask for more than the state.
I don't know about.
I thought the static stuff, I thought the state was basically the only one that had a say.
If state.
I personally, I don't know how we came up with that, we may have a real good reason for it.
We talked.
So you want to write something before I got here, you wanna call him?
Hey.
I'm like, yeah, asking if you can call to, over these to make sure we understand, right? Just wanna understand the thoughts, we get them in there accurately. And what I did was I just gave this list to Corey the other night.
We'll make sure we go over. Yeah. Alright, I just asked you. It's he, he's usually.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um. Section three to a little sign, recommend adding something regarding R one, which who else said something about the R one? Does it mean someone else mentioned the R one? Do they require permitting?
Like, do we even wanna open that gap or are. Say like a town? Thing?
I think they should require permitting.
Yeah.
I really do.
Aren't the ones that are up though, towns put them in there? They're on town land, right?
They had to get permission.
Are they on town land or?
They're village.
No.
Or village land?
Yeah.
So private though.
How many are there?
Uh, there were.
There's like two.
At least there's, there's at least there's one over by John's Bridge.
Yeah.
By.
There's one top of the hill.
B M W.
Yeah.
There's one, um.
At the top of the hill.
Top of the hill.
Well, there was.
I don't reference.
Palkeys. What's her name?
There's one over at the East One Beach. Three.
Did they take down the one over here by Jessica Palkey's hair shop?
Yeah. Yeah, she's on that property.
We'll see if, okay.
It's not M U, but that's on the M U.
Yeah.
That was given.
Would that be in high game?
That's.
Who knows?
So what side of the road is it?
Probably the room to the side of the entrance.
On the right side. Tom head, Tom right.
Tom.
Tom Hayes.
Is that actually the boundary?
It's like, like there somewhere, I don't know, exactly.
Well, I feel town line.
So you want those to be permitted?
If you go.
Joel, Joel's coming.
Yeah, okay, so review his list.
Yeah.
Hey Joel, how are you? Good, I got you on speakerphone.
I'm dropping through South Carolina, it's quite a long route. Connections on, for the mic.
Well, we, we're about halfway through your list, so I was just trying to tee it up. We do have a, a couple of questions so far, but we haven't beat it through the whole list yet. Um. So I don't know if you want us to finish going through the list and then call you back in a couple minutes. Um, or if you wanna just go through the whole list with us.
Probably best if you just continue on and think that.
Yeah.
If you can shout when the if you wanna talk.
Okay, the, the one we have that we got to that kind of made us have a question is number uh seven, you're talking about uh will Vermont D E C provide proof the existing system is adequate? If not, recommend a statement report from engineering. Essentially, we were trying to defer to the state, and if the state is happy with permitting for a year round residence, why wouldn't we be? Is that the same thought from you?
Well, I, I think the state's gonna say, either they got a incentive ball and system in place, but they're not gonna if the state doesn't have anything because of the age or whatever. The only way you gotta get something reliable is to have someone take a look at it, provide something back to the sponsor saying it's either incentive or.
So the state wouldn't be asking for that when you change it from a um from a seasonal to year round?
Like, so, I mean, that's actually a question, I guess that has somebody to D E C, but I that, that, but that program to change it doesn't go to the state.
Okay.
It, it's a request to a sponsor, right, but.
Um, I don't, honestly, I don't know. I, I.
I don't know, I mean, if, if someone wants to change that, they can.
Yeah, they're gonna come to us and we.
My conversation is the system, we need to say the system needs to, you know, be a permanent system. Seasonal. Seasonal.
Right, and but does the state take into consideration when someone puts in a system? Whether it's seasonal or full time?
They, they take account the size of the facility. Is it two bedroom, is it three bedroom? Uh. So they, there are gonna be lots of places that have old systems and the state's gonna probably have no record of, and the state's not gonna.
Care whether it's year round or seasonal.
Right, the state's not gonna send a note saying the system's okay, cause they're not gonna have any record of what they, what got put in. That's where I'm coming from, is the way it's written, it sounds like the state's gonna give a year and a half, they're not. They're gonna say, yeah, we got a program, there was a program here today, alright. Yeah.
What would you say? Gonna say in the case here, this particular situation. Okay, we brought it, we got it on the table, but let's go through Amy to find out for sure. I can ask her.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Jim's gonna check in with Amy and or uh we'll check in with the state.
I know that there's a way that they've been doing it, and that's why I wanna make that comment.
I'd be curious to, um, and I could call, cause I've had a conversation, uh uh Stefan. Petro might be late to that.
Yeah, I mean, again, the state's not gonna tell you what's been permitted or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there is a way for the old systems.
Okay. Um, we'll keep rolling through and if we got any um questions, I'll call you back.
Alright, Ben, I, I just want to get you on the phone, I wanted you to chat, um, you know, these lots that are hundred feet or less fifty feet plus the width of a shed puts it out a good distance into that hundred feet, but don't know what you guys' thoughts are on that, but I see you hadn't changed it, so I threw that in there.
Yeah, we actually had left. We, we kind of. We we kind of thought we were gonna leave that alone, we thought five feet was a little tight. Um.
You know, five feet for a hundred foot and like ten. So.
On the. I thought it was fifteen.
Yeah, I'm quite sure for the one that doesn't need it, look, if you just picture it was ten, it says five feet.
Oh yeah. One detached accessory structure. Setback minimum of five five feet from all lot lines.
Right, so if we can do that for ten by ten, the other one hundred eighty square feet. On a small lot, I would think it'd be acceptable, that's you guys decide, other than up there. Five feet allowed to maintain it. Maintain it. You know, getting on your neighbor's property.
For something over a hundred square feet, but under one eighty.
Right.
And then.
Just for the lots that are like. You know, other feet or less than, you know, break it anyway, it's a lot.
Yeah, hey, um, while we got you, actually, we did talk about. Um. What was the other one we talked about? Oh, you, I, we think we figured out you were working from a.
Previous one.
A previous draft, Joel, because you made some comments regarding setbacks in the um. R C and lot coverage. In the residential.
Yeah, you're gonna make some changes on that, I know.
Yeah, because, well, the reason we figured that out was because Oliver was just had. One of the old copies and we're arguing over what's in the copy and realized Oliver's copy was different than mine, wasn't most recent. So, um, some of those upper things that you referenced uh were have been dated since taken care of.
Yeah, it's been uh sent to me. Me as well, uh. Shortly after, like I tightened everything up, so.
Yeah. Okay, we'll keep rolling, what's up?
I see the answer right there. Yeah, that's what I was trying to do before you got the second one.
Yeah, you you got to it quick, um. Uh.
I do want to try one, so I wanted to take a look at it.
Yeah, no, no, that's great, uh, and that's what we needed, you know, um, and we got some good stuff at that meeting if you weren't. Uh, you you weren't on the call for the meeting last week.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah.
We'll just keep going through when we come back.
Yeah, we'll call you back if we get some more stuff, Joel, thanks.
Alright.
Yep.
Bye, see you later.
Bye.
Drive carefully.
Alright, um, section, so what are we gonna do about that?
So part of the chats, what do you want to do for number six? I still like fifteen, and I feel like it would complicate things.
We gotta draw a line for a hundred square foot, it's always bad.
I mean, we could make it ten feet. But but I wanna know where it would go.
But that means it's a new table, we gotta add it.
Yeah, it'd be a table.
So why is it?
We have to change everything for.
Because he's saying for lots narrower than.
Sounds a bit a little lot.
You might, you might just add another note.
Obviously, it's not. People being able to figure. Square foot shed.
It's smaller than a hundred feet.
Well, my question too is, if you're putting in a bigger than a hundred square foot shed, it's not just like. Garden shed, garden sheds put your lawn mower in or. You don't need a hundred square feet. I would agree if it was a hundred square feet. Building, not a hundred eighty, it's getting tall twice as big.
I I personally would like to see it at the back end of the backyard, if it's in the small.
But the problem is they're talking about lake places, the back end of the backyard is the lake. It's in the.
Shoreline.
In here someplace, I didn't have time to. Find it, but in here someplace there is a. Something referring to that in the uh district. Okay, basically the village. Not, and then there's been problems, of course, on the lake shore. You can only go so far, you have to stay back away from the lakeshore, that has to be permitted by the state.
That's how we change setbacks.
Huh?
On the lake shore, we change the front setbacks smaller so that they can stay away.
Yeah. That's right. And but your side setbacks down there, that's where it's kind of. There's a lot of lots that, there's a few lots, I shouldn't say a lot, a few lots that only fifty fifty wide. For the camp lot. And. There are some. In fact, there's been some comments about them that are right next to somebody's house. It's up here in the. Backside of the shed, right? To their house, close to their peril, close to their house on the side lots, and I can understand, you know. They. Have gone before the development review board to be prevented or to document.
We had a discussion, didn't we, about the side setbacks on those camps too? When we were talking about the, when we changed those.
Talked about. Are.
Yeah, I'm sure we did.
Yeah.
And and I think we chose not to. Change those.
Um. Yeah, I say leave it alone. The small potatoes right now, um. Section three sign regulations, yeah, uh, art wall. I I don't even know if I have the. Brain capacity to like dig into art wall regulations and. Well, why are they not, they should be in set like, why are they not already ready? Because. I just came up with it five years ago.
Yeah, but they should be just considered like any other sign, I mean, they're not.
Right, it should be like every other sign, it could be rules about how close it is to other reasons like that.
Well, the other thing I've wondered, how big are those?
Sure.
Cause they just put it out.
Or like billboards, are they?
I don't mean to like, I don't mean to burn any bridges here, but there's a new art wall right in front of the lawn mat, and it's huge and it blocks the signs from the lawn mat.
Well, I was curious of how they.
And I wonder if that got through.
How they're even legal to have that big.
They didn't get a permit, they just put it in. It's huge and it blocks the sign of a local.
It's lovely, yeah. Is it an art wall or is it a sign?
And it was funded, from my understanding, it was funded by the B F W and Joel Carr. Those are the people that were pushing forward with it, and they wanna put up a nice thing, and I'm not saying one of the things is a nice. See, that is not the thing, is it, Eagle, it's military, he wants to paint military people on it and make a nice art wall with it. That supports our troops, and I get that, but um, the placement of it. It's kind of, it's talking a sign to the local business.
I thought those song groups are. Those signs are.
So I was wondering what their rules are.
Their song groups, yeah, I'm pretty, yeah.
Where, like, where the signs are supposed to be.
I feel like they need to be off the road.
It is off the road, but when you're driving up the hill, it covers half the sound going.
We'll see the other groups.
It is off, I I encourage you to drive over in the book actually, it.
I do drive by there, I guess, it just has.
It's huge.
Now I know where it is, I didn't know where it was.
Yeah.
It's like white water.
Yeah.
I thought it was.
And it's gonna be nice, it's gonna be really nice, but the placement, I wish they shipped it over like eight or eight.
Don't they need a permit for that?
I, so my question is, is if you're calling that a sign.
I thought they just got a permit.
If we're calling it a sign, technically, it's not even legal in the state of Vermont, because it's over eight by eight, isn't that the billboard sign rule?
I don't know. Well, you can't have words, because I know we've had people, when I used to be in front of the art wall painting, is. People would write words on it and we had to go paint over it, because in the mind, you can't have say congrats or anything like that.
I'd be curious though about the billboard rule, because I know that it's the sheet of plywood, I'm pretty sure is what's. It's there, cause that's why those political signs that they have by the complex, they like shave two inches off the sheet of plywood, so that they're technically not a billboard.
Uh.
But if those are eight by twelve, that's. Way over that.
Well, I understand, what? Basically, is there a? Description for art wall? As opposed to a billboard type sign?
No. That's that's why I I just said, we don't.
We should, we should, I think we should add it to our.
You need to, you should add it, you need to add some definitions, and we can't have them, because otherwise, people are just gonna continue to put them up, I'd be like, okay, whoops.
And I think we should make it a. Conditionally. Because not having words, I mean, I could, I could promote my business pretty darn well without putting any words on it in pictures.
I mean, that's a big amount though, the state.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying is, and that's where.
Oh, you're saying you can promote your business by painting some houses on it?
Like, like, people could put up a a.
Right. That's true.
People could, people could put up a billboard on the interstate with no words, it's still.
That's true, cause I I can paint a sewing machine and put it on the front of your car.
Okay.
Like McDonald's could put a building with the red roof and it would, everybody would know what it was, but it doesn't say McDonald's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sure, that that's something we're gonna have to do, maybe we can.
I think we should bring that up.
Either someone take on that or like, we gotta define those. I'm not saying they're not, I'm not saying they're not important, but we got a lot more important stuff, maybe that's one of those updates we do down the road.
I would ask.
I think it is, I think it's actually kind of important.
I don't, I think we should. I think it is important, because that's one thing that's actually happening, like they're happening now.
Yeah. Yeah, it's happening right now.
And I don't think it would be much to ask Cory. What they, like, what other people put them on there.
There's nobody done, art wall, I I doubt there's another art wall in state of Vermont like those. Where someone put in, didn't they force on a group?
Yeah, I've finished a town, I know.
I know, but on outside of Swanton, art art walls.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't Burlington have issues with them?
Yeah, Burlington has a lot of art wall school.
This is what I was planning to say.
Like, like what we have?
But they're.
Um.
Not not old factories that are painted aside.
I'm not sure, they painted over the wall, but they painted their, maybe some A boxes.
Right, but has anybody ever literally put four sheets of plywood in the middle of a frickin' cornfield to put a mural?
I thought, I thought St. Albans did recently.
After us.
Yeah.
Wow, we're trendsetters.
But they still did it.
No, I I I've never seen one before, so let's, we we should trailblaze the path on the innovation and such things too.
I've never been there, I've been to Sun Slurms, right?
My. Do they have a sign?
They they would be a different look at me, because they like to write everything.
We'll put that on board.
So I thought all those boards were actually the Swan Arts Council block, that.
Then.
But it was there privately.
So.
Yeah, and and here is, I'm actually, you know, when my friend has an art wall in the back of her house.
They were certified by the.
Oh, Scott's house over here.
That's his used to painting one, oh, he was living there.
I know, but his old house has, so, but that's different, that's on the side of the house.
Yeah, it's had a wall.
So here.
But I do agree they need to be addressed at.
It has that logo in here.
Standing, at the, at the standing on their own thing, they wanna, you wanna paint on the side of your house, that's fine, but.
I agree a hundred percent.
Um, but they have a.
Well.
Art wall something out there, there's one on the one.
It needs to be as a sign.
Right, there's a side of the house, that's somebody, we're, anyways, for God's sake, Swan Rock's not leaving the world in art signs, somebody.
Right, that's decided that that's a story, but.
Uh, I'm having a.
So you want to decline them and uh tell us where they're gonna go?
I'm gonna.
Cause I think. I'm I'm more, I'm more worried about our road designs and enforcing that.
I think they should be conditional use.
Where the undersign, it's, it's sizes, they should have the setbacks, like, they should have the same, the same rules as any other sign.
Right.
My district, it's size is.
Yeah, we need that's. We need, yeah.
That they're not, you wouldn't be able to put them in.
It's gonna get bigger, and these.
You can't even have a written sign anywhere in style practically.
And I think that we should look at the signs that we have and see what size those are, and we can put it there.
I don't, I don't disagree, but I don't think that's something the entire board should be doing.
But they should be like. But they should be like, where do we beat off the road?
We're gonna do it on the other side with Cory, ask for his opinion.
They should be how many feet off the road, they shouldn't be blocking other businesses with.
In a Canadian. But could they be fifty feet off the road in the R one, but only? Ten feet off the road in.
I think for the setbacks, people have the same setbacks as a sign.
Or in the.
As any business sign.
But business signs are much smaller.
They don't have, they can be bigger. That's what I'm saying, it's for permit, that's, they need to be, that's why they need to be permitted.
Yeah.
Okay, what's next?
So he'd want to.
Discuss.
We're gonna revisit that.
Talk with Cory.
I think we should revisit it.
Yeah.
We finally got something to mention today, we skipped it over it.
I. No, what I'm, what I'm saying is Heather, what I'm saying is, is this is something completely like. Abstract from what we're doing, so if you're interested in doing. Like literally write up, this is what an art sign is, this is, this is the sizes. This is where they should sit, like how it fits into all those districts, because it's not like we're saying what a. Shumbarry's is and where Shumbarry's can go, that's all defined, that's all understood, like that's pretty common.
It's clear as mine.
Like. Well, at least today, but the point I'm trying to make is, is that is like. An abstract thing, we don't have a concrete definition and and. I don't think it's necessary, we can just say it's a sign. Like. Because it's not associated with any business. I'm not trying to give you something, does that make sense?
I'm wanting to, you could stop.
No, I want you to, that's what I'm getting at, I don't wanna, I don't want to spend all of us.
I'm sorry, we're gonna call.
Call them, okay, have them write it up, actually, better yet. Call the. What are they called now, SPAN?
Yeah.
Call SPAN.
Yeah.
And have them put a definition, and have them give us an understanding of where they would like them seen and what they, no, I'm not being facetious, like. Have them put it all to them.
Have them come to us, yeah.
Think some of the things.
I think still.
Secret.
Well, I don't think they're very, very.
I'm pretty worried.
Facetious.
I wouldn't like to, St. Albans Town, it's like.
You don't need. Sorry, pass it.
Give the definition, you go to St. Albans City, definitely.
I'd be shocked if they haven't though.
And, well, this is, you don't know, you can go to Georgia, you can go to Colechester, you can go to one of those, their zonings.
Go to New York City.
And see their definition and plan and get an idea, but that's where I.
Would start.
Some of my ideas that.
Where and where are we at?
You know.
And and.
And do they have some kind of description of it that? Then you find out with Cory, who's this real?
And that's what I'm getting at, my point was, I don't think we should waste our time as a board to sit here and figure that out.
Yeah. Not, I don't figure it out.
I mean, I think they're valuable things, but I don't want to see them affect other people's businesses and livelihoods, by having a.
A hundred percent, I didn't know what that was, now that you said that.
Huge wall. I have a huge wall, now, I didn't know that they offered drop payment on the mat at some point, that's what the sign says, so I don't know if that sign is still applicable. To what services are that are allowed, but I thought as a person driving into the town.
Probably.
I thought it would look very nice to have a wall blocking.
To. All I think, all I can think of is that comment says art.
I think it's staying in that.
Walls is the paintings they're putting on the side of the buildings down in Burlington. And they're coming along and said, oh, they're crafting a long line here, just they're.
They'll rethink, well, that was happening here too.
Well, it's very much in putting up.
Um, road, road design, road construction standards seven, eight and seven, nine. Reference should be made to our adopted road standards, which we talked about that, right?
Yeah, and. It's in the process, I've got a comment on ours, how it made. That I made up, and I want to include, near higher duty designs from the state. Is the A seventy six standard, I recommended for any. Roads going in prior or otherwise. To supply over three lots, and then there is another standard. Where the driveway, basically a driveway. To go in to supply for two lots.
Yep.
Uh, and I was. Here, we want to know. The A W six standard, you gotta go in with the help set. For the three lots or more.
But there's no, there's no driveway standard here, this is.
The driveway, the closest to the driveway standard is that uh B.
There is no. That says.
The B seventy one. And that's the closest thing to a standard, doesn't need to be concrete, doesn't need to be a big black wall.
Do we, do we need a standard? Do we need a standard for a driveway?
Well, with lots, almost basically, and a good firm.
Oh.
For a fire drop and a rescue to get in, what we do not wanna have is a rescue.
Yeah.
Squad going in there and all of a sudden taking somebody out of a house and gets stuck.
Yeah.
Well, so.
You gotta be very careful of that on these, even two lots on a driveway.
And and I like what Joel puts in here, a fee, but I, the last sentence is over, is is not, not, not at all feasible. No building permits will be issued until the base course of asphalt is applied and approved by the.
No, that can't happen.
You can't do that, because no one's gonna build after they put a road in, it's gonna destroy the road.
Well, I think put one in at all, or they're not putting one up on. They got three out there and it's just gravel. They ain't paving that.
Were you drawing them?
Woodso.
Which is?
Three houses in there, are they paving?
Right.
That's paid for by, or that's permitted for by, isn't it?
No, I thought that was it, that's all that's going in there, right?
Three, that's all three.
Only three?
Only three? Something else must be coming, those are spaced way too.
There's a lot of space.
The back lot is bigger.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought they had. Some type of access for a lot there off of the other road. The next one down that goes out to the uh. Deans.
Oh, off behind there, Deans Development out behind.
But I thought there was one access to that new development off of that road.
Not supposed to be. That act, that uh.
No, it's showing us three.
What happened there was in that, probably never should have been approved, they have an access to win for that. Development over to, that you're facing it, on the left. But it's going through one of those lots, it's at the corner of that.
Yes.
How do you access this one?
Development.
Yeah, it's only three lots.
Yeah, it's only three lots.
And that back one is what?
I learned straight at heart.
Doesn't say.
The houses, I mean.
That was probably a size thing.
Yeah, but those lots are huge, they're.
If I remember that, like this one, the road is seventy five feet, that everybody in the sun has measured it, but they also have huge mounds there.
Yeah.
So much the, the, is there one, is there a shared mound there for three lots?
There's mounds, I believe, are crossed over onto other lots, whether they're shared or not.
So there's not just one mound for three?
I don't believe so, no.
Yeah, I can't believe they didn't allow it, they would allow that, I believe.
Well, I know the septic system is on the one that was, everybody thought it was too close.
Well, that's what I was, she has a picture here with no houses built yet, and I'm just like, why, I didn't notice a lot of them, I thought they were putting more lots there, that's why those houses were jammed right up by the road.
They're far enough that one, sure.
I I believe it was.
Till the foundation.
But in the, in one of the.
Onward, let's keep moving. Onward, let's keep moving.
Yes.
It's on.
The law of the next.
I think, but hold on, um, so no.
I think we need to.
The la- I think we need to add the whole last. And again, I hate to put it on Cory, but the last lot will not get a permit.
You know.
Occupancy permit.
Look out.
Yeah, but.
A no building permit. It's wrong.
Because as 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 we've seen, what does an occupancy permit even mean?
Don't even let it go. Well, that's that's exactly it. They're already in the door. Don't give them a building permit until the road meets our standard and is signed off by the town road form, the town road commissioner and an engineer. Before the last permit is given, period. What about C O S?
So. So I had a question about about the road stuff.
Don't get it done.
Should. I mean, this is all, this is like looking, should the town look into buying a core drill to check these roads?
No. That's an engine answer.
Yeah, but it takes like as much.
That's an engineer's job.
I know, but we're not requiring.
They're not certified, but they pull that core Oliver, and they're not they're not certified to say all that core meets same standard.
I mean, if you can read the standard and read a measuring tape.
No, it's not that.
But it is.
I like that.
If you look at that road, if you look at that road that we looked at in Woods Hill. Anyone in the world could have told you that was that was illegal.
Try to pass that road.
Yeah, but core drill is not gonna do anything, that's all ground.
Yeah, but you can still core drill. So if you're building your road to standard, you're supposed to, I don't I didn't read the exact thing, but you can't just fill it with inch and a half.
Yeah, they're gonna dig down and see what the layers are or inspect it as it's installed.
Uh. But that's what I'm saying, is is ins- ins- inspecting it as it's installed is probably too much to ask, because if it's a big driveway, especially it's not gonna be done in a day.
Or. Right.
Whereas if you had a core drill, but are we requiring an engineer now to sign off on them? Because I thought.
Over three lots or more.
Okay.
Two lots, no, three lots or more, yeah, crack it, it's a problem.
Three lots or more, okay.
For.
So no permits are final.
So is that something new or is that something that we added, the the engineer approval or?
No, that's something we've been talking about, because three lots or more, but it's not gonna be designed with an engineer.
Yeah. Yeah.
My beef has been trying to get an engineer to sign off on it, two lot.
Yeah, I got your number.
Private driveway that you you're putting the house in up past cars.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be your house and it's gonna be Nick's house, and that that driveway is fifteen hundred feet long.
That driveway is that.
It's a longer than that.
People probably build houses out there.
But let's say, for example, that's what you do.
No, I I know what you mean, I know.
And and you guys are more than capable of putting a driveway that is fine for your two houses.
Yeah.
You do not need to pay an an engineer a couple thousand dollars to come out and stamp that.
Yeah.
In my opinion, and it may not have to happen now, we should still be having.
The road commissioner.
The road commissioner go look at those, but not even engineer stamp.
Yeah. For the width, mostly.
Basically for the width.
The fire truck.
For the fire and rescue perfection.
Yeah. Yes. But not need an engineer on to to.
So and that's how in Fairfield it's done, the road commissioner gives the the cut approval, the for the color, so they put the cut.
No, I would like.
And then the fire chief actually has to go back and sign off on the driveway, the whole review, the whole driveway, so they actually have two people. So the, yeah, the road commissioner just, it's like the first ten feet, and then after that, the fire department.
That's what that requires, the road commissioner does that.
But are we, this is game, it's real time game.
No.
Well, we're.
Could be, could be.
It could be different.
Be correct.
Okay, alright.
Yep. You did wrong. So like what happened, if you didn't know, what happened on up at top of Woods Hill, for example.
Don't be crying, Tommy.
Is. They went and measured. They went and measured this cul-de-sac and this cul-de-sac was not nearly big enough. The problem was designed, so what the what the owner did is went out there, cut this, cut the soil out.
Yeah.
The outside.
Cut. Cut.
Cut the soil out. And put that much stuff.
Which will do nothing if a fire truck drives over it. But the other thing with that is is they they were in the wrong, but that never should have gotten that far before they got told that, because I told Katie about that a dozen times.
So.
Just, I mean, it was so far off that just driving by, you could see it was way too small.
That's the whole.
But it never went and got measured until they did the certificate of occupancy when everything was done. Somebody should have sent them a letter, stopped and seen them. Way before that, because because it was so egregiously wrong that you could see it, you know, we weren't talking, it was off by a foot or two, it was off by fifty feet.
It's the whole. They.
So it was easy to see just driving by that you couldn't turn a fire truck or something at the end of that.
I'm sure.
So to get that last building permit, it would have been correct.
So it would have been the house that Max would just built would not have gotten permit.
Until that road was right there.
With it until that road went there.
Okay, so.
I don't know, I can agree with that.
So so Chris, here's my question, this might be something for the enforcement fire, but if in an instance like that, you're caught. No matter on the size of your project, should you be required to let an engineer sign off on it?
Well, it's three or more.
That's incorrect.
No, but I mean, on any, if if you know, if we have any type of driveway that you say you did right. You know, like that one you're talking about with the two houses.
No, it's private driveway.
I understand, but you there's still a a standard that has to be certain width. So if if I'm saying, if there's a standard rule that you don't follow and you're caught. And we won't give you that last permit, how do we, like, are we gonna require an engineer to then, like, to give the approval?
To the end?
To then, because you've been caught. So like in the case of that one on Woods Hill.
No. We gotta have, well, that one should have needed an engineer's approval beginning.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if something like that is where they're gonna fix it, the engineer's been long gone on that project.
No, he's gonna have to come back and stamp it, you still need to get the stamp.
That's what I'm saying, so in order to get that permit, we're not just gonna go by either driving by and looking at it, or like that guy has to come back.
No, 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 because they won't get that permit until you get the stamp from the engineer saying they went back and approved it.
So there, did they have an engineer approval on what they had there?
There.
So they were.
I don't know, are are they approving that? Was there an engineer's design in their drawings?
They were running bad for a little bit. I know it.
They probably put it on there, what was on that?
I wonder if it was on the Mylar.
It was on the Mylar.
On the engineer, the engineer designed it.
But. Did they follow it?
That's what I'm saying.
I think they designed, they designed the driveway.
That's why. That's why this here.
That expressly stated what that driveway should be on in our bylaws. That's what.
I also don't think that that's.
Say, if you follow this right here, your A seventy six standard.
Which that should be right.
Get your cul-de-sac and get your your other width, that's gotta be a fifty foot, everything in there.
Yeah.
Needs to follow.
Well, here's my question, um.
So this is all we gotta do is three or more needs to follow A seventy six and needs an engineered stamp, period.
Yeah, but so here's my question, going back to that road, that road doesn't need A seventy six by a long shot, because the cut rope.
I don't know what, you're probably right, Oliver. But they're previous to what we're instituting right now.
Yeah. Okay, but I thought we, no, what was the road standard we did? Maybe that was.
Is there, I think I define. Road standards.
It's about seven, three, seven. You got Joel's. Open it up and go maybe second page.
Isn't that the one that Oliver?
No, seven eight, hold on, hold on, I just wanna.
That's the wrong one, this, this is the wrong one, that's what I want, the wrong one, that was the wrong one, this one is wrong. Which one is? Okay, his his definition helped me.
So municipal, hold on, I just want to finish understanding this. Roads and pedestrian access, when the developing re blah 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 blah. Road design, all roads serving composed subdivisions of four or more lots or dwelling units, that should be three. That should be three. Horns currently in effect, the chaff and form blah 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 blah, Vermont state, okay. All right away, roads shall logically blah 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 blah. So it doesn't specifically state road construction, road construction, including specifications related to. Ground, chaff and form to the Vermont Agency of Transportation's A seventy six standard as amended. So they are in violation of their permit. That that should be the A seventy six standards. We should be sending them a letter saying, hey, we're in violation and we need an engineer's stamp, right?
Should be something, it should be self-control, self-laid control.
It's in the right area.
That's that's our discussion after we finish the. The bylaws is gonna have to be the the.
No, that's yes, but the point I'm trying to make is.
It's already here.
It's already here.
But the body.
But I'm gonna say they gotta follow A seventy six, but but it currently says four, not three.
That's right. That's right, that's what that changed.
And they're only three.
Right here is, I my comments that one of the things that I wanted to address here was the A seventy six road standard. Driveways for three or more blocks.
Yep.
Then on the the B seventy one is a standard for road driveway, no more than two lot.
So but listen, I don't understand, these B seventy one is a commercial standard.
Yeah, but it's still.
It's like the older standard, isn't it?
It's an older standard.
Yeah, but but we shouldn't be.
You don't need the cul-de-sac on, that's the other thing that's.
Yeah, but the.
Yeah, but if you look at the cut for a driveway, in my opinion, under two, you just.
The width is all that's important, you don't need to.
That's the real important part. Now, the select board is putting in something that plays a road concern. It's in this program today too.
But my problem with the select board thing is that to me, by putting that in here like they asked. They want us to really promote the road takeover policy, which I think is slightly misleading to developers that the road will be taken over.
No, it's because they need those standards.
Because the. Is the A seventy six standard the same or greater than the town's standard?
A seventy six standard is basically just the standard of the road, the quality of the road.
Yeah.
The problem the town is having is.
The wastewater, right?
Wastewater, it's the.
Water.
Yeah, storm water, whatever you want, retention pond, retention.
Permits.
That's where the state that's come along and said, you got it and. Christina, when you dealt with lightness on that, that involved it.
The state, the wastewater permits is on three acres only on developments and it's impervious to.
So I think I don't see a problem within this section somewhere adding that if you. Plan to have the. If you ever desire to have the town consider taking over your road, you need to be all be in the just place there.
State, both towns, rotate over the policy.
Yeah. There. Yeah.
The only one part I have with it is if you've got a, let's say you've got a fairly large development. And going in and they're asking before the permit is issued, I don't have to look at it again, but they're saying. You've gotta have at least three inches of blacktop, is that what I read on that?
I think it was five, wasn't it?
Whatever it is.
Cause it was enough that the someone that was in question about it was saying they couldn't skim, they had four and they needed five. They couldn't possibly skim one.
So so Jim, you got the wrong one here.
What's that?
You got the wrong line thing.
I don't know.
So so yeah, so listen. You you have standard B seventy one B, which is commercial driveways.
Mm-hmm. Because it comes up in the zoning book.
But.
In the zoning book, they're talking about.
But there's a B seventy one A, which is residential driveways.
Oh, okay.
So I'm gonna send this Christina.
You hear that? Christina, did you hear that?
Did you watch the wrong one, you?
Yeah, that's three seventy one A.
Oh, I'm sending you.
B seventy one A.
Christina, I just sent you an email with it, because I I was looking at this and and this road is built better than what we're asking for for subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah.
Still has this.
I was hoping it'd be used by the one with the two-way commercial divider.
So this is the second page, this second page, um.
Put it in my uh.
But hold on, hold on a minute. The second page would be what we would ask for.
Southern Grove District.
Something within like the Southern Grove District. Prime example, prime example, saying nothing about it. Mother Hubbard's. Look at Mother Hubbard's drive. Look at their parking. Look at how that driveway is held up.
Yeah, you got the one.
Yeah, I thought.
Yeah, but you.
I I'm not trying to say anything bad about that, but but.
It's like that. It they didn't do that.
Because there was no standard when they built that building.
No, that. The driveway is, it's, the problem was is people kept driving and parking off the driveway, so there was a what I would call flyby night. Construction company that had a half a load of asphalt left over from a driveway they did down the road. And the guy just dumped it on top of the grass and packed it and charged like seven thousand dollars to it.
And you're not a rock. But if you look at their cut. And you look at the couple of the potholes on the backside of their, when you drive around the back.
The flop.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not.
The the problem they have there is lockup. Just really, that's a business that if they were allowed more lockupers, they could have put in more parking.
Well, we just did that, we just prepared that, but this would be for a commercial.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
Didn't bring up a good note, I think it should be.
The one I think if you think of that is that road they just put in, the Sholand Road, they moved it.
When you.
Yeah.
That's not what I thought. That where they just moved the Sholand Road for the state access. That's something.
I filled for the same.
The commercial one?
Yeah.
But. I'm.
Yeah.
Surprised. And even if the last ten feet of it is, they didn't do anything to the rest of the road that's gonna, their road.
They they go for a couple years, they pulled some fill in there. That they didn't build that just.
No, I'm talking the whole thing, like where they they put it right by the road is probably built to standard.
No, it's gonna be.
But as soon as they get, as soon as they get down by that retention pond, they didn't do anything to that, they just put some stone on top of the where the Sholand Road used to be.
I can tell you right now, they didn't just put some stone on top of that road.
Where the Sholand Road always says better.
An engineer, an engineer went in and they did a nuclear density.
You know, my opinion of the state of the city.
Test on the compaction of the existing road, and yes, they may have top dressed it, but an engineer stamped. That that base was gonna hold it and they used a nuclear density machine to make sure.
Same issue.
There's no way the state put in a, how big was that project, twenty million dollars?
It's a class four road that they blacktopped and put a couple inches of.
They they didn't just blacktop the top.
They had to do some more stuff.
But they didn't take any without.
Don't necessarily need to if you put twelve inches over and the base meets meets that.
But I'm saying is they didn't put twelve inches over.
How do you know, did you drive out there?
Yes, I drive out there all the time. I'm I'm not talking about the park in the.
Like the.
Like the parking?
Where it comes back by that tree line and meets the old Sholand Road. They literally blacktopped over class four road.
The state has a next thing that was.
So so go to the other end, go to the other end of Sholand Road where the town had a problem with it, where they were hauling stone across it. And they dumped in a bunch of four inch stone because they, cause they made a mess of the road and they never fixed it.
For brag. That's what they normally would do.
No, but they didn't fix it after. So that's actually a town road, you can't even basically drive down it, cause there's stones this big. Because they hauled stone from Orvos. The back way.
So they can haul it in the back way?
Yes, and it destroyed the road, made much holes, so they just dumped a couple loads, which is fine. But I know the town was after them one time and said, hey, you need to fix that, because.
How close to Tylon Road was that that big stone?
It's. It's right after you cross, no, it's when you cross the railroad going back towards Bushy Road.
By the way.
Maybe a hundred feet up, and it's about seven hundred feet long.
So they typically put that big rip wrapped in on there.
To clean their tires up.
Clean their tires up.
Yeah, but they.
On the edges of projects.
What I'm saying is is as much as it tore that road up when they hauled that stone down through there. I'm very curious to see what it does on the other end, where that hole went solid and out of it all.
I I. I highly doubt they didn't put it, I mean, they're bringing eighteen wheelers to solve in there.
I'm all for it, because I got eight three loads of drainage stone out of the deal.
Okay, so well.
Okay, they dug.
So we're gonna assess the B seventy one A standards for two or more, or two or less, two or less.
Yeah. Two or less.
For the joke.
Or less.
Yeah.
Is B seventy one.
A.
A. With road foreman. Or. Commissioner. Sign off. Over five hundred feet.
It's my.
Then it's powerful in that spot. This one makes a little more sense, twelve foot minimum. We did talk about a maximum or a length thing too, where the firetruck would pull in those.
If I heard right, what they'd like to see is being able to, two fire trucks to get by and take your eighty per each unit, so that's sixteen foot.
Yeah. Yes.
That is twelve foot minimum.
At five hundred feet over.
That feet, that could be, I'm not sure of that, that's where we need to clarify it.
Thank you for the.
Yeah. That's what other towns have, is look at five hundred feet, you have to.
If not, you have to.
You have to have a pull off, you have to have a pull off or the driveway has to be wide enough, this has to be able to pass.
Are they?
Yeah. There's certain business here, I agree with you, there is.
Five hundred feet and that goes for the road commissioner. Sign off needed. At five hundred feet or more, you need the road commissioner or or Kevin LePain to go out and say.
I.
Do you know, does anyone approve the road cuts now? Yeah.
Government does. Government does.
So that could all be done.
Yeah. But what I'm.
Cause the road council would control the width. Cause the county was can would control the bit.
Right.
He would have a general idea.
Well, what I'm saying is is we're not asking him to go do, to go inspect here to the backside of the cemetery, but that's a little excessive.
Yeah.
But if it's over five hundred feet, they're going to expect inspect and it needs a pull off every five hundred feet.
Well, number one, number ten.
That would be my only question on is the five hundred feet, right, that's all I.
I'm pretty sure that's what he said, they add more than enough posts.
In there.
Where driveways, are they defined?
Um, road names, town will provide the first sign for a new road that has not put. Private or private on a sign, that would be the responsibility of the operator. Okay, Cory, yeah. Definitions, general comment.
So wait, I have a question about that one, is there anything in there that say the sign gets run over or stolen? Is the developer responsible or replace it because they hacked it or replace it?
Who's who's gonna give the C that make them do it?
That's well, but because I have for nine one one reasons, I assume it has to have something.
They come out of the town, but the town pays for it.
Yeah, but I feel like I should say it in there, maybe it already does that. If the sign is damaged, the HOA, whatever, you were responsible, cause this is for private, so it's more than one house. Is responsible for. Replacement within so many days.
Yeah. Yeah, and here's what we would also add. Any. I mean, I don't know if it's even it already stated in there. Any private road or driveway with three or more. Um. Lots serviced by three or more, servicing three or more lots needs an HOA. Period.
But they just talked about how much everybody needs HOAs.
Everybody does that. Eight HOAs, so everybody all filled up to living if those kind of developments, so suck up.
It should.
It all depends who runs the HOA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most people that hate HOAs, most people that hate HOAs, the ones that have good HOAs that actually.
Some of that is not. Yeah.
I hate HOAs, but I'll remember a little more.
Going back to your science, I just make sure I note all of this, correct, missing signs must be placed at the. At the expense of the developer or the HOA.
You can't say developer because the developer is probably on.
Right.
At the expense of the HOA, you want to give them a time limit?
Yeah. Yeah.
And they're already O A, so they're there.
Within within sixty days.
Sixty eight?
Sixty days.
And I think it becomes a point of HOAs have got to be pushed a little bit more from zoning.
Yes, no, yes.
And. And originally years ago, I can remember some coming in and. Uh. Coming before the planning commission back when they were doing the subdivision, you asked them for a copy of their HOA or get one going.
So all the developments of four lots or more, three lots or more.
Three, three. Because they're gonna have.
Must have HOA.
They're gonna have with a shared road. Cause you could have a three lot subdivision that is not shared.
And how do you require that HOA to be kept on file?
That's a whole nother ball question.
What's on the base file?
I.
But at least we're getting with the HOAs and it and it and it can force.
Because technically if those HOAs are in possession of the roads, shouldn't they be paying taxes?
Don't they get taxed on the co- common land? The HOA itself gives a tax bill.
Well, that's what I'm saying is, and that's a way to keep up with recording the HOAs is because. If there isn't an HOA in place, then they're getting a tax bill over here, it's gonna be a linkman.
The tax bill, it's there's some hesitation, there's there's certain ones, there's uh. Land rich. They got roughly sixty acres out there that are not being taxed for.
Why?
When they did the reappraisal though, they put in with the house lots.
No, they unplugged.
You know, they had it onto the.
But why?
Well.
Who who's nobody, who is the land deed?
Cause there was nothing in place, I believe, at the time to go ahead and do it now on the next reappraisal.
But who's it deed into?
Who's it deed to, it's the homeowners association owns it.
So why aren't they being built for it?
Well, that's the.
Cause if that's the case, can we just add a little of my taxes to everyone in this one, so I don't have to pay them?
That's what we don't pay them, and you carry them. Yeah, same thing.
And as an example, Samahan Drive, you go down Samahan Drive and they have, I don't know how much land I'll ever say, they have eight or nine acres of that. And they're uh, I think they're just duplexes down there, so you've got four duplexes and each one of them is getting built. You know, one acre.
Oh, but but that's my thought with how to keep track of these is if those HOAs get that tax bill. That's a way to keep track of them, because if they don't pay the taxes, it's clear that no one's paying attention to the HOA because. That's like, that's the point of it, is that road.
How do you work that?
And that's a way to 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 make, and that's a way that the town can.
Can pay for this shit? No, I just think, no, but really, like, how do we do that? Cause there's someone else is gonna be doing this.
And.
What, are we the first town that's had decision? No, I I find it hard to believe, so why are we doing this?
The sound of the course that most towns don't care about, I think.
But but my thought also is is that they like they should be, and that's a way, I think, for the town to keep track of them is the tax thing.
Well, uh.
It it's it's no different than how we're doing it now, where each house gets added a little, but it's it's part of your dues. You know?
And they.
When we absorb someone, can we give them back?
No.
Like when we absorb a road, can we give it back?
Government doesn't give anything back.
No, I mean, like, let's say we take on a road to, uh, and they're like, you know what, there's only like, like, we're set, it's your own house.
You're more trouble than you are.
On that road, everything else is conserved, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna allow your road anymore because it's not worth it for us.
They don't, we have one like. We have one.
Well, they turn it into a class four.
We have one of those, don't we? I thought we talked about that.
That Cory talked about it at the meeting.
At the. No, I thought that at the select board meeting, one of those guys was talking, there is a driveway that was supposed to be this.
Development area.
Or no, it was the it was it was the land trust one down on, is it around Frenzis? But there's a road or something and there's only one house and they were trying to get them to sell the. Only sell the development on like four hundred feet and back up the road.
That's where we come, I was.
That's a great, okay.
Yeah. Okay, we'll check that.
Yeah. Uh, okay.
Yeah.
I don't think, yeah.
We've got, we've got some good stuff here, let's keep um.
Yeah.
We did talk about um.
Road signs, we need, we need that.
We got road signs, names, definitions, I think.
Definitions.
We know, um Cory can we can we look at this.
Definitions were, that that was fine, I checked that. And we had changed the sign definition and the area was. That's what it changes of awareness.
So, hold on, I'm gonna call. I am gonna call Joel back and tell him about the road design stuff.
Okay.
Just so that we don't leave it kind of.
Get all of the same page.
Hey Joel, Mario. Alright, so real quick, we got through everything else, it all makes sense, um. Your biggest thing, you know, the road design and construction standards are something that we've been beating our head off the wall about here a little bit. Um, and I think we finally came up with a solution today, um, and essentially saying that any. Uh subdivision with a shared road of three lots or more. Needs an engineered stamp to A seventy six standard, period. And and it's not the uh bill, the building permit for the last law. Will not be issued until they have that engineered stamp. The the things, the reason we went to the last law and you put the first law is because that road may be built out as you go. Right, and they may not have it fully complete during the construction of the first or second house, that makes sense? Correct, that's that's the thing, but the. So, I mean, maybe we still think about that and maybe that change, we change that to. Two thirds of the development at at the point of two thirds of the development, so if there's, you know, twenty houses going in there. Uh fif- you know, whatever, a dozen or fifteen need to be uh in before we need that stamp.
Who are we talking about?
Um. So. Go ahead. Yeah, and and that's why we've been beating our head off the wall, because we didn't want to put too much tax, tax, too much work on to the town, right? Um, so the the other conversation we had was going to a B seventy one A standard. For any private driveway that serves two houses. Over five hundred feet, they will need a pull off and they will need sign off by the road foreman or the road commissioner. So not that's my biggest thing, they've been talking about getting an engineered stamp, but personally, I feel it's. It's too much to ask someone to have an engineer stamp their driveway for one or two houses over five hundred feet. But they have a design standard. That they can follow and and be able to send Kevin or yourself out there to say, okay. You guys, this meets our twelve foot, it looks good for a fire truck, it it's it's all set and and you guys can kind of sign off on that. And then over five hun- that's over five hundred feet. That means, you know, under five hundred feet, they're close enough to the road, the fire truck can get to the house from the road, et cetera, et cetera, of those, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And and also over that five hundred feet, that's when they start and for every five hundred feet, they need a pull off. To to allow vehicles to pass, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, so.
Or a sixteen foot minimum width.
Or a sixteen foot minimum width, we could put that in there.
Yeah.
So that. That's that was my thought, because and the reason we went there, obviously, you probably know is three lots or more, they need a nine one one road road. Um, so that's, you know, Joe, you know, someone wants to put a driveway up behind wherever and it's serviced by two houses or whatever it is. Um. So the one, the reason I called back was to make sure, I mean, are you okay with us putting that in there as the town road foreman or the road commissioner? Or even maybe we put the the fire chief as well on that, signing off that that road meets that standard and you guys are happy with it?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think it definitely is. And I'm a little just being um. Doing it that way, I don't think you need that pull on engineering piece.
Okay, and we're gonna put the engineering piece, you know, we need a stamp. Um, three or more, uh, because that would essentially have meant that that third house that just got built on Woods Hill would have never got a comment. Until that road had been signed off by an engineer. That makes sense?
And I. You can either refer to the A seventy six or the town has adopted. Road changer with a certain base and a certain. Uh, layer asphalt and then being finished in layer asphalt.
So I guess we could eliminate the A seven.
Wow, yeah, but it doesn't have to be paid.
What's that?
Doesn't have to be paid. Yeah, what I'm saying is if we get rid of A seventy six, if they don't want town to build it, then they don't.
Right, but it could contradict, if we if we tell them, if we tell them, well, that's not seventy six, that would be A seventy one. No, that would be A seventy six.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, um.
Are not paid, so I, you can leave it at the A seventy six.
Cause the A seventy six base standard would be the same as the town, right? So they just have to pay.
We're assuming, as long as we don't contradict ourselves and your standard's different than A seventy six, does that make sense?
Correct.
We should probably cross reference that.
Yeah, whichever whichever restricted really, so it should be written.
True, I mean, maybe maybe, I'm not saying your standard's wrong, but maybe your standard should be uh the A seventy six, I don't know, I I'm no expert.
It it should, it it should be A seventy six or the town on something slightly different better, that's the town's prerogative.
Yep, okay.
A seventy six is the state standard, so as long as that's been. Or and because it's a town like, anyway, I would say that's what I'd write a grade of A seventy six. Town standard, whatever.
Yeah. Um.
It was a restricted project, we didn't say it had to be paid. Well, I agree with that, I'm not sure maybe.
All we're mentioning.
Yeah.
Um, now. Uh, the last thing that we're gonna, uh, we did talk about, but honestly. We're gonna have to do some research about how exactly to tackle, and I think Heather signed up to is the art walls. Um, just just, I mean, yeah, they don't necessarily, they're kind of their own beast, but we should come up with something and put something in there. Um, and I'm not saying they're important, but we're gonna have to just see if there's someone else that adds that out there, that makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, I, it could be very simple if the the maximum size.
Me.
Get better in your road, from a from a free boundary, but right now is.
Um.
It's the definition of sign.
Right.
Right. But. Uh, anyway.
Okay, um, I think that was it, I just wanted to check back in with you and let you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll try and get it in there, get something in there, but I do think that we're gonna, we've already talked, I mean, we're gonna have some changes coming down the pipe even after this is all said and done. Um. Such as, one of the things we talked about was like, once A is back, I would like to begin the fee schedule and enforcement and stuff like that, really. Get some good teeth in some of those, that makes sense?
Yeah.
Um, which may not happen, we should probably just get these passed and get them in and then make some tweaks down there. It's kind of, I think.
Yeah, we have a lot to it, uh, the village change, you are already. At this point, we're like, we can fix it later, so.
And then actually, since I've got you and we've had time to process. The village was upset that we, not upset, uh, had an issue with us changing the TSA to central business. Because TSA does not allow residential housing. Um, and by putting it into central business, it would. And where that is an issue is the cleanup of the old concrete site. If there's the possibility to have residential in that district, it means their brownfield cleanup will be more in depth. But what I don't understand is it does say you can have mixed use and lodging in TSA. So how is that any different than resident?
Well, lodging is not.
Long term.
Running a residence that's, you know, stay for a day or two and leave.
Yeah.
Um, what's interesting is the cleanup, I think, would be dictated. By the village decided what was gonna go there. Not what could go there. If the village, like, we're getting ready to. Uh, we're going to the process of cleaning up Forest Street.
Yeah.
And the state. Loves to know what we're gonna put there. And that dictates the level of cleanup, that's my understanding of the ground deals process.
And what the comment Heidi made was the plan is to still put the the uh power company there. But if that vote vote was to get voted down. I think they might have someone kind of waiting in the wings to put uh something else there.
Right.
Um. But it would need more in-depth cleanup. For, um. For the brownfield.
Right.
So I I mean, we're not trying to.
Again, if they already know someone who might be. Interested in doing something there, that's gonna be cleaned up to that level.
Right, but I I'm thinking what they're trying to do is not clean it up to that level. Put in the electrical facility and call it good and hope that passes, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think you, I think you could talk with someone at Northwest Regional Planning. Would have enough background on the brownfields to answer the question. Is the cleanup to your zoning rights or is the cleanup to what's included to go there?
Yes.
Because. That would answer the question, you could still leave it the way that you proposed to write the regulation.
Um. Okay, we'll have to reach out to them, but I will be honest, Cory said he's been reaching out to them to try and get some maps and stuff taken care of and he's getting crickets.
Okay.
Cory's been trying to reach out to Regional and hasn't been getting much of her response, but I believe he was sending afterward an email today, he said. Corey's been trying to reach out to Regional and hasn't been getting much of her response, but I believe he was sending afterward an email today, he said.
Yeah, cause Greta. Yeah, um, I lost, I knew she was still there and I, she's pretty good at speed on brownfields.
Yeah, so. Um, all right, we'll be set in another meeting and we'll we'll talk about that before then. Okay.
Yeah, that's just my thoughts on it.
No, I think we're we're sitting pretty good, Joel, appreciate your time.
Hey, thanks, I'll be right back.
Okay, we'll talk some.
Thanks, bye. I forget what it was, but I don't have too much information.
Chacking him up.
I did, most of my work done when I'm driving.
So do I. He said he wanted the other gentleman first called him, that's why.
He did? I just have a question about the stuff for Heidi. Um. Most of it isn't anything significant, but the R five thing, isn't that that's something we took out because of the new state? Boss. That if you if you allow a single family, you have to allow the duplex.
What number?
Three.
R five's down.
Number three, what do you?
Or a lot of stage, a lot of stage.
A lot of page, Heidi email. No, this little packet, Jim.
Oh, I know.
Third page, Heidi email. We already go over this.
Conversion of a single family, we're talking about conversion to a duplex, right?
Yeah, which you can't stop.
Yeah, that's what I was, she said it was.
And multifamily is in there.
She said it was removed, but not, there was nothing.
But multifamily in the.
I'm assuming that's just one of the ones they crossed out because of.
But R five gone away. Right?
Small multifamily to afford dwelling.
Yeah.
Permitted use. But uh, yeah, R five is crossed out. So permitted in three?
Well, it's gonna be permitted on our.
What page do you want for R five?
Two thirteen. But not that three, right?
Two fifteen. Yeah, so number twelve conditional use is multifamily. And a small multifamily, two or four is permitted.
It's permitted by the state, can't stop it, right?
Yep, yep. So. Conversion, you can, it would be permitted under small multifamily and multifamily would be conditional. That conversion is irrelevant. But we are gonna be getting rid of the R five, it's gonna be just R one. Same thing, two families, single family.
No, you're not getting rid of R five.
It's just gonna be called residential, that's right.
All all gonna be residential.
That's no, R five is is your additional in the village.
Yeah, so R five is the.
That's why I water and sewer.
Yeah, so basically it's just residential water sewer.
That's what they're, no, that, you're right, you're right, I was.
I didn't mean challenging on it.
No, 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 I was, I was thinking it would be lame or something.
R three is what's completely going away, right? That's all right, Sarah.
R one is is water. Is is.
R one is where Oliver lives.
Yeah, I I.
R five is going to be your, you just pull water sewer.
No, water. Stewer. Wondered if Heidi answered it, I'm gonna have to call her.
Call her.
I I know, I'm I'm the type of like, don't just, I'm not screwing around, I'm gonna call her and tell her like, this is, to make sure we understand it, maybe I will.
Ross called me the other day for a one hour meeting today.
Um, what's that?
Ross called me the other day for a one hour meeting today.
Hey, we've been.
We got a lot more done today.
We got more done today than we can do with Corey's here.
There's five weeks to be. We've been here for two hours.
I know, we're almost done, you hang on for one more.
One more hour.
I don't know, it's you that's calling now.
Ross likes to talk.
You know what I did, you know what I did yesterday? I was in the woods putting.
When I called, when I was on the phone with Heidi.
Yeah, Ross what?
Andy's gonna start calling it.
Hey, you know, back ninety degrees.
I'll teach you a degree. But I was doing that.
Uh, well, I, you know, it just popped into my head, common order of peace.
I don't think anybody wants to stay here that long.
No.
I don't have a problem, but I was like, what would I bring?
I did.
Ross is on the thirty emails, so.
Share.
No.
We did have that three again. What are you talking about? You're saying it's not Thomas incident, you had.
The person you're trying to reach is not available at the tone, please record your message when you have finished recording and they hang up.
Hey Heidi, it's Ross LeBoy, hey, we're having a PC meeting, just going through your email and wanted to check base, but I can fill you in um, later, thanks, bye.
Can you check me or is that a text?
Ross, I know those people that.
It said mobile.
Okay, I told her to say.
Shut it, boy, now these new iPhones, it comes out as a text.
I see you guys.
The the new voicemails on my phone now come up as a text.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if we go in there.
No, 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 it comes up on your home screen, like after someone leaves you a voicemail.
It it prints it out.
Right there. Yeah, the new update.
And then you can go to it and read it if you don't wanna play that joke.
Yeah. Because I don't worry, I don't plan that.
Yeah.
I just called back, okay.
Okay, if you finish on the first, what about number five?
So we're good there, um. Four is, uh, so so I was gonna talk to her about four. But uh, talk to. Heidi, but really Greta. Okay. I'd like, I would, I think Joel probably.
What about Jim, Heidi notes? Okay, number five?
In review, the draft, the project will be eliminated. The green or the text is not strictly like. Or a red light.
Just.
A red light ring. Or green lights, it's strictly like. Be sure. That's Corey.
He's probably just.
Did we already go over this and I just, yeah, some of the gems, you didn't go over some of the driveways.
Oh, we started.
It's proposed driveways, oh no, proposed driveways on my lines. You went over it.
Yeah, proposed driveways on my wires, makes sense.
Required.
They need it for nine one one. The state that there were the explosion with nine one one.
They're running through a mess of that overall, uh.
Well, and the thing is, is if you. If when somebody goes between sub subdivisions, the DRB approves it, it's proposed driveways are on it, then.
We already.
I can send that my line to nine one one, it will give me all of those lots numbers, and when somebody comes into our building permit, you have the number, and therefore you don't have to change their. Address after the bill because the driveway is in a different spot and they don't.
Cause that's what happened. Is that what happened on Sweet Hall or?
The mess they had over there.
Are they gonna be numbered?
No, this was a couple of years ago, but I knew they had it, they had to change the name of one of the. Little subdivisions because they. The numbers were wrong. Because there was like two. Because when they put the nine one one in place, because I think it's a. Sheldon mailing address, but it's actually.
It's all also.
Yeah, but they had to change the name of the, it's where it can't. That's wrong.
Yeah, I remember hearing something about that.
Would do Layu and Hin Quato.
Wasn't it close to a name or something else? One was a road and one was a drive or something?
It's a hand up, I'm gonna change those numbers, you know, the mess.
Yeah.
It was, one was a road and one, it was like John Road and John Drive and they're in different places or I don't remember what the deal was. Okay, um. I like your, expand a definition of ag.
What about driveway, that's not.
Very nice, sorry.
That's not in the definition now, or.
Perpetual, have Corey, Corey.
The expanded definition of agriculture, um, one more. I I, it is, you know, very informative and adds a lot of different things there, but. We shouldn't say, should we say vegetables and berries, or we shouldn't say vegetables and fruit, do that?
I think this was uh.
But but I feel like vegetables and berries, I mean, it gives ideas, but it's also part of the horticulture.
You're not wrong.
But horticulture is science and art, growing plants for food, but but it's like a small scale crop with.
But it says, but not limited to.
Large crop, but that's what horticulture is.
So, I think what Jim's trying to do is, we're trying to just get a. Including but not limited to these things now. I think the bigger thing, I know what you're getting at. But I think the bigger thing is. It should say not when not exempt from zoning, but. This can be. When exempt or not exempt from VSA twenty four, dah 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 dah, because. What's the sense of having a definition for nothing we do with? Like, we're gonna define agriculture right here, but nowhere in this book do we reference agriculture, other than saying twenty four VSA forty four thirteen and there.
Pretty sure.
No, it's not, it's not.
You didn't say agriculture, I'm pretty sure it does.
It's not a permitted use, it's not a commish- conditional use, like what is the, what are?
The reason that it's not a conditional or permitted use is because in the state of Vermont, it's permitted everywhere. You can't, you can't.
Yeah, state of Vermont's permitted everywhere, and but it's.
I agree with adding this because the whole issue that they had in the meeting last week was somebody challenging. That agriculture is not. Challenging what agriculture is, because it's not.
Right, not agriculture, each square up and down, you know, one acre of strawberries is not an acre.
Yeah.
You're raising it, you're selling it, it's just like a vegetable stand or anything else.
Well, his other comment about not.
And they move racks, period.
Not using fifty percent of their land.
That's not a, that's.
Ninety percent of the dairy farms in the state of Vermont don't use fifty percent of their land.
That's right.
Because they own three hundred acres, there's a hundred acres of crop land and the rest of it's a woods that they're not. Making milk in woods.
It's wild.
Yeah, no, exactly, that's, yeah. I agree with just adding the definition, just so it's there.
Just follow the.
I agree. But wait, you got something in the. In uh. But let's see if it's defined, hold on.
Agriculture.
That's. You're in. See, you're in, that's not ag.
This is, yeah, this is not commercial.
That probably shouldn't be in there. Where.
She's.
Uh, the interchange issue, this is two twenty over.
You can't take that though.
I don't wanna take that.
Isn't that foreigners?
Whether it's the Bob.
Two twenty one.
Uh, maybe, you don't have.
Because it says including equipment sales.
But it's not the time.
It's agriculture, it's not.
Oh, here it is, here it is, an individual or firm supplying raw materials, feed, equipment and or services, producer of agri. So that would be, that would be H U O leader.
Who in cario.
Who in cario, so that's the only, that is not.
Acquaintly dealers.
That is not agri, that is not agro.
It's agriculture business.
Does that make sense?
Okay. Yeah, from what I think they're distributing.
They're selling the things you need to grow things.
Oh, okay.
Equipment or grain or.
Supplies.
They're like your giant deer dealer up here.
It's true, people don't realize a lot of those two large grain mills in one.
Yeah.
With cargo.
Yeah, I get the cans for the bags from the bee and I turn them into paper bags.
Hmm.
Yeah, and that's really cool, it says.
I don't use shopping carts.
Well. I hope you don't go to the back of your car and then don't care if they're crying.
No, I can word that out for two.
I, or you don't, or you pay for the paper bags.
Do you know how much time it saves me?
They never give you pay for money that they have to pay.
Do you know how much time, time is money.
You don't, you don't return those bags, you don't care if it's bad.
Yeah, it burns. I figured you'd like that.
Can't talk about it, I guess.
I don't have time to go grocery shopping and that delivery fall into my car out the door in five minutes is. In God. They should, I would agree, what I would agree with is they should come up with like plastic milk crates. That you could then bring back to deposit and they deposit and return them, I was thinking about that.
You can store it in your, in your.
Cylone. And clean them.
And they have the cleanup with.
Anyway, yes, I know you don't handle like Ross's.
Take.
We're gonna hang on, what about the definition of right of ways?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Corey put that in. See what the state says, the state does have a definition for that.
Yeah, I know, that's. I think that's valuable. Jims, Jims' thing was the fifty foot right of ways cannot be part of your representation, right?
Trying to eliminate this business of anything going through.
Harvest lane is better than one acre. Your straight lane.
So, 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 no. Then, then.
Let's say.
You're getting at it from the wrong angle, Jim, in my opinion. What we should be putting in is in our P U D requirements. Any. Commercial. Interstate commerce, railroad, et cetera, right of way, square footage not be included in a subdivision. Size, does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I think maybe more broad with your.
What, whichever way you wanna put it, I just wanna get it down, but point the the commercial right of way, that one's right.
You've got, you know, well, the problem is is. I don't, they're gonna go through it, they could go through it, but they would not be taken into consideration of their lot size. Where I want of that is, let's say a couple of those lots down on, um, Harvest Lane.
Obviously, you have one that's six feet from their neck.
The right of way is six feet from their neck, so.
That gets us six feet, right?
So.
Cause it's from my gas tank.
I don't wanna say there, but. It says sixteen inch, like what? Five hundred and fifty psi in that.
Yeah, you think.
I wouldn't wanna live in, within a mile of.
I wouldn't, I don't.
It's smooth, it's right here.
It's one of those, that's just a sandwich.
What's that?
I was, yeah, you should throw another body stop.
Yeah, so my question for that is, is.
Um.
I don't understand how the gas line doesn't speak up because you look at this power project they're doing right now on Woods Hill, if there. There's gotta be some houses there on the north side of Woods Hill that are. Because they're moving that line thirty feet.
Same. Sugar Maple Drive.
Yeah, but you have, so you have a hundred and fifty foot right of way for that power.
There, well, there's a, there's a hundred foot right of way through there and there's a fifty foot setback from the center.
I think it's, I thought it was a hundred, in the paperwork, it says a hundred and fifty foot right of way.
I think it's only, I.
Because they just, they just cleared it and.
Those are three year land, right?
But my question is, is where? Because I was looking at it the other day. If they put those, those, they're holes huge.
Uh huh.
And they're moving it thirty feet to the east, I think it was, I can't.
But they're eliminating, they're going to single.
I think.
Yes, but still.
I think it was fifty feet, by the way.
That they're moving it?
Yeah.
Because I was looking at it the other day, I was like, are they moving it? This many feet from like this hole, or is it from that wire that sticks out eight feet? Cause we're trying to figure out how we're gonna stand those holes up. They're huge. And that, from my understanding is they're driving a base thirty feet in the ground.
Yeah, right, oh yeah.
But how, like, I could, cause so I was with Morgan on Woods Hill. Where it's all letting and I'm like, and my only guess is that they're gonna fly those poles into the hell come here.
No, we're green, we're green, so flip those.
See what those things are, the, what are they, sixty?
Seventy feet.
Seventy feet tall?
Well, seventy feet tall.
But how, when the, when the.
The thing is, it's big, how do you put it up there now?
How do you get? First of all, how are they gonna get those poles in a truck anywhere?
They cut into pieces.
I think, cause that's what.
I believe, I believe those are bolted together, I don't think they're one piece.
Cause that's what we're trying to figure out and I was like, but even in some of those places, you know, it's pretty.
It's just like the winter, it's those, those, those shat, like the new ones they're putting on the yard. So they're just sections that they bolt together, I bet those are.
Do they go on the inside? Cause I was wondering, cause I've seen, I haven't seen these, they haven't put any poles up yet, but I was just thinking about like. There's no place I am gonna watch, I'm intrigued by, very.
Always gonna sit with a beer and watch.
Because they don't raise.
So to feel.
So, listen, we're gonna go back, Harvest Lane. How big are those lots? Some of those lots half acre, no, maybe a half acre, so the square footage of a right of way. Would not be. They would own it. But there, all of their setbacks.
Who pays the taxes on that right of way?
From gas, they all pay taxes.
So. But I'm saying that house that they're six feet away from their porch, and they only own a quarter of an acre, do they only pay taxes on?
They don't have a porch that close.
Yes.
You look at the mobile and say they don't do that.
From my gas, what kind of state can all out, right, Jim?
Look at them, oh.
From out, that's state get all of their.
Yeah, I forgot the sense.
Good if you're hauling your lawn over the gas, but you're not gonna go into the.
I mean, just look at the back of those houses and you can see the edge of the right of way, so is that land taxed twice?
Okay, from the center of their road. There are lots.
Even got my lot bigger.
From the center of the lot on the, and you're going in on the right hand side, it's approximately one acre deep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Deep.
Deep. Out of that comes half of the road.
Yeah.
And fifty feet. So it doesn't leave much for setbacks from the road.
So then I have like technically a hundred and twenty foot to build them.
They don't even have that.
So what's our P U D requirements for, for lot size? Is there catch requirements for lot size?
No, there, you're over, I think you only have to be over a quarter acre. Now, all the utilities in, uh, let's take the Gamache.
Yeah.
All the utilities are in the roadway, nothing going through any individual lot that I know of, okay? In other words, nothing.
Ten year.
Servicing other lots going through one to the other or anything of that nature. Their water accepting, as far as I know, runs alongside of their road and. Swor goes out to the sewer line, water comes in from where they're getting from. And to, and goes off to each individual lot.
They have, they have individual wells there.
Hmm.
They have individual wells. They have individual wells for every house?
No, I don't believe so, I think it's combined for shared.
Will they share?
Really?
I think so.
Wait, I'm surprised, there's no water on that side of the road, that's why I'm.
You take it out?
Ours is on the other side of the road, uh no, so my house is a half mile from the farm. My well is like five gallons a minute, the farm well and every other well on that side of the road is a hundred.
See, I'm not sure where their well is, I can't answer that question, but everything as far as I know, nothing goes through each individual lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, the situation in that got biased. That I wish it had never gotten biased was the extension of. Here is uh Gamache's, we wanna see.
I'm right out right now.
Well, I didn't know it here. But they got the regular driveways in, they got the width of the fifty foot roadway and everything else is well service. And order association and everything.
How did they service them, they just built a new house on command off of Gamache last year. How the heck did they hook on the power if it's all buried up?
Because it's all set up for it, they say they're coming the road. It was all set up. It's the same way with uh. Uh.
No, they just put another house way in the back and I was curious if it's.
Yeah, but it was an individual lot already set aside.
So it was a hard thing, I I was worried about the higher lot of things.
So they have a Gamache as a a right of way.
No.
Or I'm sorry, an eight away.
Yes.
Yes.
So they put those mound systems out in the out in the.
They got they got something out back, they're all sort of riding.
Out there. There's two mounds.
I see their mona, their mona.
Mound that's tied off the street lanes too, right?
No, so.
Street lanes.
So that Ross, there's a there's a mound right next to Bushy Road. And then there's one um. Like there's the house that sits towards Mother Roberts. Uh there's one near his property, and I think there's one way in the back, there's I think there's three different mounds.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, I'm showing. Oh, that's a replacement. There's one, two. Three. Four. Five. Six.
See, I told you to show you.
There's a ton, there's a ton of mountain systems in here. There's one.
Are they all built or are they replacements?
No, they're built, two. Two, three. Four. What what four? Systems. Four.
So the other question, there's one.
Five, six, seven.
Do they all have their own or are they?
Two, eight.
No.
So what did they ever do with that?
What did they ever do with that house up on the top of the hill in that development, is it in the H O A?
Yes.
Because I knew there was a fight about that because he has like his own driveway and.
Jacob Lang, you mean, the one you can see from Bushy Road?
No, uh. King, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he still has to be in the.
Yes, it is, it's in the deed, it's in his deeds, it's right in the H O A.
Yeah. Cause I knew there was issues with that because his driveway is off of the other off of, does H D put that?
They got permission to go in that way and uh they came back and.
Yeah.
Tried to, you know, say, hey, we're not part of.
Cause he wasn't the original owner, uh he didn't build that house, he bought it from somebody else.
That may be, I don't I can't remember on that one.
Yeah. I know he bought it.
But it's.
When I knew it, when they built it, like when the first house was first built, there was a big. Ura about the H O A because he has his own septic and his own driveway. But he still has to pay what H O A needs.
We have, so it's a private road to get to it.
Okay. We gotta we gotta get back on time. Um so Cory, I want Cory to look in right away definitions um. And look into. Excluding.
Now we're going from. A acre lot being at least two hundred feet of road frontage down to a hundred and fifty foot of road frontage. I don't think we wanna see taking another fifty foot out of a hundred and fifty foot road frontage. For right of way for three or four houses out in the back. I think it's gotta be kept individual. In other words, if they're gonna take, they've got a hundred and fifty feet. They're gonna take fifty feet for roadway, it's gotta be a two hundred foot road.
But what if the right of way goes through the middle of the property?
Well, then it's no good.
What?
What's good with that, if it goes through the middle of the property at a hundred and fifty feet, doesn't leave you having a lot on either side.
Right.
So you got two two lots on either side. With fifty foot each.
Twenty twenty seven.
Like can't go through the middle.
There's actually a development I saw just like this in Fairfax.
Well.
The guy was trying to sell it online. As a. Permitted but not anything built and it is right under transmission line, hundred and fifty foot right of way for a transmission line and there's like. Twenty feet that I could see where you could ever, cause you can't build a housing.
This is the problem with what's going on, is the fact that people are coming in from.
Yeah.
Here, there, another place, or they're buying, or young couples coming out and they get sold to filled with goods and then all of a sudden, bingo.
But I don't understand how the town ever gave him the permits for those places because.
Well, that's a good question. It's like one, I don't know what I did with it, but it's like the one that goes up to our. Mayo Grove. Now there's a underground electrical line and. Communication line going right through a lot. The building envelope, doesn't show any building envelope, but it's, there's gonna be problems.
So let me let me just. So I'm I'm looking at your neighbor's house, which I've always always baffled my mind, across the road from you.
Yeah.
The power line goes right through the middle of that one.
Yeah.
And that house is. Pretty close to that power line, I mean closer than you, but not much.
It's fifty feet away from the center of.
The edge of the house is fifty feet away from the center of the.
That power line where that runs through.
So it's. The power line or the right of way?
The the right of way, in other words, the right of way goes up through there.
So the house can be. On the edge of the right of way, should we, what I'm getting at is, should we have setbacks from a right of way?
Well, that's a good question.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying now, yes.
Because if we had setbacks from a right of way, as opposed to, hold on, as opposed to making the lots. Taking the right of way out of the law sometimes, if we had a setback from a right of way, a public utility right of way.
Yeah.
Power, water, sewer. Gas, railroad. We made a setback from that, it doesn't matter where it is in the law, it just means the law may be useless. If that power line went through there, like. Your law, for example, if we said we needed a seventy five foot setback from from a right of way.
Mm-hmm.
House has to be set, well, then your law may not have been able to have a house on it.
That's right.
But.
Yes, no.
But. It would help with like what happened on. Harvest Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we're looking at that, should we, do we have a twenty five foot setback from edge of the right of way? For.
I'm surprised those right of ways don't have that.
Hold on, hold on, we have a setback from a road right of way, why can't we have a setback, why aren't.
That's what I'm saying.
Why aren't setbacks from utilities being enforced? A utility would be no different than a road.
That's why, that's why I'm saying, this is the right of way, here's the utility, so consequently.
But what I.
You have your, there's your sideline, right there.
But what I'm getting at Jim, I I know what you, but what I'm getting at is. We talk about roads, maybe we need to change your definition from setbacks from roads. To setbacks from a potential right of way. In general.
And I would say almost have to.
Your front setback from a right of way, whether it's a road, it's a power line, it's a it's a it's a gas line.
Okay, that's okay, that's okay too. That's okay too.
Do you see what I'm saying if you change that definition to.
Well, the other, the other thing you have to look at too is there's some places that have. Could be an agriculture right of way, where say I have a field out in the back. That. That should be observed because you might end up somebody putting a house in the red middle of those one day, because it's not technically a road, but it is my right of way to my.
That's in their deed, right?
Yeah.
Because where my brain goes too is, look at what they just did up by your house, putting water and sewer up through there. Is did they make the right of way for the water and sewer bigger or are they within the road right of way?
Yeah, Jim, that would be great.
I think they tried to say. So if they if they made, what I'm getting at is if that if the utility is not within the road right of way and there's actually a little bit of a right of way. Given for the water and sewer that goes up through there. The setback should be from that, not from the road, meaning those houses could be from the back.
I can hear that, I can hear. Yeah, I think they dug it in the road.
Uh I'm just thinking out.
There are roads and this is something of course came out of work and that's where you come into a situation where. Your lots are all designed on Route seventy eight up through there. That's fine and dandy, now they come along and say, okay, we wanna put water and sewer up through here, so they've been working hard to do it without going out into the road road. Because it's a state road to to put it in. So I'm, all I'm looking was looking at was the fact that, okay, you have a subdivision comes in, let's say I'm, doesn't make any difference where it is. And the guy says, well, I wanna put three lots out back here. Okay, it can be approved, but let's make it not a part of that front lot unless they have at least two hundred feet of road frontage. Because we're down to a hundred and fifty feet of road frontage as it is on. Doesn't make any difference where it is, seventy eight, Route seven or any of those. They don't come in and take a hundred and fifty foot wide. Wide lot and all say say, okay, we're going through with, we wanna go through with a fifty foot right of way on the side of it. Where do you get your setbacks then? What's left to use?
Right, that's that's.
Just to stop developers from trying to bring it.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I think we gotta put in some 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 protections for people too. Now, let's think about this though, and we don't have time, we should probably.
Yeah.
Protections to how many, how many other places are being run? Is my own thought. Meaning.
Did you run into it in coming to Southern Grove?
No.
No, there's no danger.
That gas line continues down through and it cuts down.
It's look at some.
No, I'm talking about where he is, that that goes through, it cuts down to Kellogg. Goes through those developments on Kellogg, that's all built up, there's nothing gonna be anything new. Crosses is is. Broder Farm Land Trust on. Lowering or uh. Home stop. Cause it does cut through there. Long by Southwest.
Long by Southwest.
Yeah, uh.
No, I don't think.
I didn't bring up.
They just built, I don't know, they just built that house down there, but that might be on Arthur's. Couple years ago, years ago.
Yeah, that that's 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 Grant's, that's Sean's house.
Well, that was on. Yeah, that was on.
And they were down there surveying two next to that.
He's he's.
They surveyed.
He went into Land Trust.
He's going in the land trust, there's folks coming up with who's gonna get something of this and some sort of that and the other things, so.
He was.
Alright. Yeah, so. So alright, we've got.
An example, here's an example, if you just go. Under the present. Or Harper Gold, down next to those houses.
A.
Two lots.
That's really good, right?
Two lots.
Wait, I'm surprised that Land Trust is allowing that.
Because they're only taking the back.
I know, but usually they, usually they're an all or nothing. They won't usually let you.
Well, for some reason, they were, they were.
Yeah.
Coming down the back and.
Cause. Cause they cap, they cap the money that they pay, so we tried to subdivide our firm into acre sizes that can cap the money so we could get more than they would.
Alright, um we'll set the next meeting, let's not, we're not gonna take the time to talk about.
This is, this was brought in more than anything.
Regular schedule.
I'm gonna get some on the table, so I don't think you're going, because if you get into a meeting with the general public.
If it's out of.
It's uh.
I wouldn't be opposed. Maybe we can we can see. Um. I can talk, call Cory and see if he's got time, I would not be opposed to doing another regular meetings. In like two weeks. To just like. Yeah, because for me personally at night, it's gonna be hard for the next couple months. Um and I I feel like we've got a lot of time.
You look more good today than.
Than we've got done in a while.
Well, we're also gonna be needing one people can attend, right, the normal public, average public works during the day.
Well.
Here's. My thought was, and I had that internal, that internal uh.
I'm still people to feel like we're doing some things that during the day, daytime is convenient for me on on Tuesday.
What I'm gonna say, because I had that thought, like what are people gonna do? We've had a ton of meetings at night that nobody's shown up to and we've had taken a ton of comment and we need to. Find a three hour block to sit down and 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 get some shit done.
Yeah. But recently we've had people come to the meeting.
Not not necessarily about this stuff, other than in public.
Well.
Fair enough. So this is special meeting that you're planning out or this is next, you know, like one.
One or both, I was gonna see if Cory could do one of these meetings to go through some of this stuff we set up for us to clean up our final drafts.
That could be part of it, if there's one thing you came to know this meeting today that I noticed, it's a hundred foot research something that's a part of. There are one of parts that I will research too for a comeback, if it comes down to sit down and.
So Jim needs to.
Christina is darn.
Christina is.
Researching.
Self-screwed up.
I mean, Jim's lady, if you take hide Jim's dope. Wow, she goes wild.
Thing is, I grew up.
I hope you butter, I have some of that.
When I left Bagway and went into quiet.
Jim's always had a secretary.
I had two.
Let's talk to that.
Perks.
I'm not gonna do that.
That all I had to do was say, this is what I'm looking for, this is what I'd like to see, have them make a back with something and I read it and say. Well, we just put this in, put this out and then that was it, I didn't have to do anything, they did choreo and actual. That makes something too, but any, it's a different story, but you're over here to talk about it.
Okay, so do you wanna talk to Cory and then get a date, Cory that he could do it and then I can reach out to all of you?
Is is does that one more like meeting like this?
Three meter.
Or does it take work for everybody?
No, I think I think we can add two. Let's do this, let me call Cory and see when he can have a cleaned up. Now.
It's gonna be on a Tuesday.
What you could do while not to touch up.
Tuesday, okay. I was gonna say, Monday is.
Monday is not a chance.
But Tuesday, okay, let's get it, a Tuesday, cause I definitely can't do a Wednesday, especially this nonsense, I would invite Kyle. I would, I would, an hour okay, but.
I would probably leave it to Ross, it's a Ross hour.
Have I got this, I will type all my notes.
If you wanna stay home, Ross can go.
Yeah. We need all my time like someone driving.
I'm serious, you have many people.
You wanna get more done with the next meeting, we're all just gonna drive around in our vehicles, not together on the phone together.
Yeah.
You start sounding like Trucky Trump.
Okay, so you're gonna call Cory and find out and then find out, but he can be ready for Tuesday.
What I'm what I'm. Yes, what I'm getting at is what I would like is to have him have this stuff. Incorporated into a cleaned up draft.
Okay, so I can probably get him all of these minutes by the end of day tomorrow.
And where I was going with giving you this was maybe it's as simple as. Dan this, send it to Cory, Dan yours, send it to Cory, like.
Kind of be a.
Well, let me type it up so there.
Affirmative for finding law without engineered stamp for a road.
Or you can sit and watch us, we don't have cameras.
Um.
What would you like here?
I I don't care, literally using.
And then find out how how long can he be ready for Tuesday for a meeting?
Yeah, and I would say not next week, I would like to say.
Are you just waiting for your job? Who's gonna put that? We also, I would say you can just expect with the right here. Yeah. We also have Sandy who's here to basically to do all the permitting and stuff, um, can we get it during our meeting?
We're good now, almost done.
Okay, so we will.
What's, Jim, you got here?
I don't know. To be determined.
Well, how come you haven't got time in the evening anymore?
He's having kids.
Maybe you're not aware.
I've been waiting for it, tell us, that's all.
Okay, adjournment.
Dude, I love Bodie, you could be.
Bodie.
Bodie.
One, four, five.
B O T I D.
Okay.
Ross, do your job.
Yeah.
Get us out of here.
Um. Public comment, any necessary business, I entertain motion to.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made, it's your second and it's been seconded.
That's right.
I'll check it out.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Very good, all those. Signify for say good.
I don't think.
No, what did he say?